There.
Huh?
Oh, Jim's closer.
He's stuck in my old chair.
All right. Our sound system's not the best, so you might want to use the mic, John.
Well, that's going to be tough.
Okay.
I feel like I'm testifying.
I know.
Wow.
I know. In the old days, the old days, before COVID, we would have a table and sit around and yeah, interact.
Exactly, I know, I understand.
Yep.
I'll try to be lighter than I normally would be.
Correct.
All right, there you go. Hi, first thing I want to ask you to do is introduce yourselves to me. And if you know each other, and then I'm going to ask you to do one dumb thing, because we have to do one dumb thing to break the ice, and that is, I want you to find something in your wallet or your purse that says who you are, perhaps in a funny or amusing way, that others may not know about, and share that. And I know it's kind of, they probably all know each other one way or the other, but just see if there's something there. So, super. I'm John Morgan. I am from Salem. I have worked in community and organizational development for almost 50 years, and reached the point where people refer to me to one of the old guys, which I'm not too happy with, but on the other hand, they also say guru. It makes it hard to live up to that. But do a lot of work in leadership development, organizational development, and planning kind of work. And in the past, I've done work with Roger and your staff on a number of projects here. Enjoyed very much when I get to come here. And actually have vacation here with my family, too. I've been a lot, and using Cus Bay as a base of operation for exploring this part of the coast. So it's a place that means a great deal to me. And I got to say, I, in reading Roger's and Nicole's goal report here, and how they've done, and then reading the text of your state of the city address, of that long list of accomplishments, I am nothing but impressed. Literally, working all over the state, I don't know any other city that has accomplished as much as this city has accomplished. You have a lot to be proud of and thankful for. And it also sets huge expectations for the future to keep it up. But we know there's, you know, your work with the port, in terms of economic development, is critically important and transformational, and I would predict that that will be successful. And then you're going to go, oh, crap, now what do we do? Because all of a sudden, the intensity of demand for housing and services and all can go way up. One of the things that's impressed me with Roger and his team is how they seem to stay pretty well on top of things, and anticipating things. And that's good. We've got a fabulous team here. Want to talk a little bit about, oh, well, no, let's do those introductions. Geez. Tell us, tell me about you.
All right, I'm Chris Jepner, and then Chief of Police at Cus Bay, and been here for about 21 years.
And what's in your wallet?
Ah, let's see. Not only money, that's ridiculous. Let's see. I will, I'll show you a Florida voting card. I like to vote, and so I'm going to give people a Florida voting card.
Nicole, your card.
Um, so Nicole Rutherford, Assistant City Manager. I've been here a little over eight years. I do not have my purse or wallets with me, but I brought food and beverages.
Imagine buying two more.
Melissa Olson, Finance Director. I've been here seven years. I don't have a wallet or purse on me either.
Can you make something else?
She has batteries.
I have some extra batteries.
Yeah, no wallet, no purse, she carries batteries. Where are they?
Roger. I've been with the city, started in early 91. And most people don't know, I had found something in my wallet that occasionally I go bowling, so I have this bowling card.
Occasionally.
Sarah Stevens. I have been on the Cus Bay City Council for, I think, about a year and a half. Is that right? That feels a little longer than that. I am going to note my hats. I get really bad migraines because of the fluorescent lights, and so you'll often see me in a hat at city council meetings.
Sorry I was late. I'm Stephanie Kilmer, and I've been on the city council since 2016, and I also am the liaison to the Cus Bay Downtown Association. And in my wallet and my purse, I actually carry two business cards. Well, I carry more than that. But I have my own, but I also have my bosses at the Southwest Oregon Regional Airport, so if someone's mad, I can hand them that card.
Wow.
Rob Miles. I've been on the city council for a little over four years, and I have in my wallet an expired first aid card, so if you have a medical emergency, you might want to seek somebody else in the room.
Joe Benedetti, I've been on the city council this go-around six years, prior 18. I don't carry a wallet, because now I put anything in this secret compartment, you know? But I do like to have something in my mouth, and so one night during a meeting, I asked Nicole if she could get me something. Chief Chappanor got me these lifesavers. I can tell you, do not use them with a mask. This peppermint is going up in my eyes, and I was watering, so just keep that in mind.
Hopefully, it was a sad copy.
That's why he's been on council so long. Why is this person here?
My name is Lucinda DeNovo. I've been on council for a little over six years, and I love to travel, and so I carry business cards from places. I've traveled throughout the world of the hotel. So it just reminds me every time I look at it that, oh, that was a really cool place I went, so.
So you've got keys from all over the world.
Maybe not keys, but business cards.
I'm Drew Farmer. This one might seem appropriate at times. Even after I quit smoking, I learned as a kid, you always carry a lighter, because you never know when you're going to need to start a fire.
I'm Jim Hawley, and I've been with the city for 17 years. And my wallet, even though my kids have been gone for maybe almost 10 years, I still have no money.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Worthing. I'm the Deputy Director, City Engineer for Cus Bay. I've been here since 2010. And in my wallet or purse, I've been carrying around the remote control for my electronic or electric jack system for my cab over camper, because it broke, and I'm trying to replace it. And I've been carrying it around for eight months.
Sammy Pearson, Library Director. 10 years, will I call that a, something like that. I just added to my purse a natural room scents, because I have two teenage boys. And so this is a list of how to make my house smell better.
I'm Mark Anderson, Fire Chief, and I don't have a purse or wallet, but I do a business card that actually says who I am. What it doesn't say is that I have a master's degree in sarcasm.
You agree?
Jeff Atkins. I've been here a little over 16 years. Time Chief of the Fire Department. I do actually have some money in my wallet, because it was my birthday a few days ago, and my daughter gave me some money back, so it's kind of nice.
Wow, that's terrific. You by far have been on the council long enough. What do you think of all these newbies? Are they okay?
They're great.
Okay.
Been wonderful to work with.
Good, glad to hear that. What keeps you coming back? And what brought you back?
Um, you know, you always, I took some time off, and these two women here talked to me about, maybe we should get back in, or I should get back involved and run again, because, you know, of course, you know, things weren't running right, and we had to, you know, put our two cents in. The only condition was, is I said, okay, if I do that, then these two need to run. And I didn't trust them enough to come down and file by myself without them, so I made sure they came with me, and we all filed together.
Wow. Wow, pretty amazing.
And then he dragged me into it by promising it'd only be a couple hours a week.
Listen to his part of that, too.
Yeah, I've been asked over and over again to run. I lived in Kaiser for a long time, and then Salem otherwise, if I just moved back to South Salem, but there is just no way in the world I could run for council. They kept asking. I'm not even going to serve on the council, because the amount of time it takes is just over a run. And my work all is working with communities all over the state. It's not at night meetings constantly, in just some other corner of the state. There's no way of it, so. So now that I'm trying to slow down, I move to Salem, maybe, maybe, we'll see. We'll see what happens. We'll see what happens. Anyway, the best answer I ever got out of this exercise was a guy who, meet mild gentleman, and he pulled out his J.C. Penney bra and panty club card. And the crowd went wild. Turns out, his office was across the street from Penny's, and he did the shopping for his family, which included his daughter and his wife, and so he kept his card for you. No one's top that one. So hate to break the, no one's top that one. So, anyway. Well, let's talk a little bit about today. What is it, and let's just say it just very generally, what do you want to accomplish? Why are we doing this work? And what does the finished product mean for this community and for you as an operating council? What do you think?
Well, we want to set some goals that we can accomplish. I can tell you, going back when we had this first exercise six years ago, I was not a fan. Roger can tell you this, and Jennifer Groth, another counselor at the time, said, oh, we got this person and different strategy, because I didn't think we should go around putting dots on things to determine how we're going to get where. But we sat down and came up with a plan, interacted with the staff, and said, can you accomplish this a certain amount of time? And we collectively, it was interesting, the council was pretty much all based on the same kind of goals and get there. So what's best for the community? You know, there's some long-range goals that you see haven't been here. One that I brought up six years ago and is still on here and not been moved at all, but, you know, it's still there and it's still being considered. So, you know, to help the council and develop, we all have different ways to get there, but collectively come together.
I think it also, as a council, we're all moving in the right direction, so it's very clear to see, you know, when we put those goals out there, what we're trying to accomplish. And quite honestly, this staff is so incredibly talented, so it's always super fun to read this, to see exactly where we've been and how many of the goals have been accomplished.
Anybody else?
I think we learn a little bit more about each other as well. I mean, we all know each other and have for a long time, but there's always something new that comes up in it. And I think that's important, because it shows what's important to people and why they decided to dedicate this time as well.
Yeah, you know, building personal relationships in this council has been wonderful. I'm glad Stephanie hit upon it. Before COVID, we did some fundraisers that we would go over and do a dinner collectively together and serve someone. And then we also got together individually, I mean, at a home or visit with the people. So what it did is it became a personal relationship, which made it better for us to all work together. I miss that, and I'm hoping that we can do that again, so.
Breaking bread together can be very useful. Yeah. I know cities that specifically do that as a council, but they do it at a council meeting, you know, you have to do that. But to dine together once in a while, and then to do it with their key committees, they have a budget committee and planning commission, more than anything, and actually do some team building by getting together and having conversations.
Hopefully, if they know me better, they won't disagree with me as much, right?
It's not working so far.
Anything else? There are two things that I want to bring up. One is, council, you're establishing what you want Roger to do. So it becomes a basis of a two-way covenant between you for what your expectations are of Roger, and through Roger, of course, city staff, and use that for the purpose of evaluation, and ongoing evaluations as well as formal evaluations be the very foundation of that. And the other, I think is critically important, it's resource constraint. And then as you do this work, it's really important to do it in the context of understanding, do we have enough resources to do all of these things? And if we don't, what are we going to either take off the list or go find new ones? And you've been doing this long enough to understand that, but I think that's really important as we work through today. Think about what are the resource constraints? Hard to point out. Ah, just a little illustration about that. Anybody know the guy?
Root.
Yeah, well, I've had, it's been called a tooth, it's been called Mark Simpson, a few things, but what really represents, you know, this is just the classic example here is, it represents an iceberg. And the, pretty lousy iceberg, but yeah. You as council, at most, are probably controlling 20%, or I'd say closer to 10% up here, in which you have to work within this particular environment. And this is that stuff that's visible to the public, it's above that water level. There's about 10% that you share with staff, which is primarily the budget process, more than anything else. And then down here is where the work of the city really gets done, and these are the resource constraints. Those things that have to happen anyway. So if you've got a million-dollar budget, that means that you've got $800,000 that's really down here, and you don't touch that. That's the stuff that Roger and staff do in two ways. One is the day-to-day work, like day-to-day policing, day-to-day management of the wastewater treatment plant, that kind of thing. And then also, it includes that work, which really is working on council goals in partnership with you, which fits kind of in the inception here. So you've got big chunks of your management team that are working on things that are not the day-to-day operations, but they're working on the bigger projects, along with the support staff that helps them do that. So as we work through today, I ask you to be really mindful that whatever you want to perhaps show up as a council goal has got to be resource constrained or understood. Now, for instance, the library, we know that has been a goal, and a lot of you mentioned it to me when we talked, because a lot of effort has gone into the campaign and the cost estimating and everything that goes into that, and so far hasn't come to fruition. But it's one of those things that you will spend time on. This 80% also has to do with your own time, meaning you as a council, what's reasonable to put on your plate over the course of a year? The things that we're looking for, I would suggest, and you may feel otherwise, so that's fine, but in the, your council agendas, what do you want to actually see on the agenda for those things that are coming up? A lot of things that we find in here are things that are going on anyway. And I would say, yes, those don't necessarily need to be council goals, because you're already doing them, very staff-served. And that doesn't need to rise up to the top level of actually being a goal that the council actively wants to work on, but instead have those things that are most important to you and that you're willing to get on, and then part of the staff's responsibility today, and then in refining this and bringing it back to you, which is the expectation, they will walk away from today, and then with staff will help compile it, and they'll cross-check it for the resource constraints and make sure that they can actually deliver, or you ask them to deliver, or help point out to you that where, those places where additional funds might be necessary, like for instance, going out to the library. And actually having a pass, and if that happens, you know a tremendous amount of work that is going to go in terms of implementing that project, and that will just take a lot of resources away from the balance of what the council does. I did this work over a couple of years, maybe six, seven years ago at the city of Madras, and they had 36 council goals. And I asked, well, how much did you accomplish? The answer was essentially none, because they were just spread way too thin, therefore become unreasonable. I was really pleased to see that you have nine goals in your existing list. That's pretty realistic, especially if you're dealing biennial, as this is. Most cities do this on a one-year basis, and that's why I say like five to eight. If you have nine, that's reasonable. They're big, they're big chunk items, and a lot of sub-goals or objectives in those will work on all of that today. I would hope we can walk away from today with a list of those major goals, which in the way that you lay them out are really more like topic areas or focus areas. And then these objectives that you created before, and we'll go through and look at all of those things. I think the place to start is really an affirmation of looking at those goals, where they are, where they can. Ran a plaque through the wall of their city. These are the nine goals that you have. Working well together with partners. Want to see it, okay? Working well together and with partners, wastewater, street sidewalk, parking lot, streetlights, facilities, I've got it all, and housing supply, homelessness, communication parks, and probably say, these things permeated my conversations with you already. And just on these broad goals, let's just start with a discussion of these broad goals. Are they still appropriate? Are there other things that rise up? Oh, in fact, well, wait a minute, I'm going to go on, I'm going to come back. This is a summary of what I heard from you. And so library, Empire District, homelessness, affordable housing, economic development, and public relations and technology were mentioned by more than one person. So, in fact, some of these were mentioned, essentially library, Empire District, and homelessness, I think everyone gets something about those things. So those obviously are pretty important objectives, and they fit within the context of your goal statements that you already have. These others were mentioned by one or maybe two people. Crime prevention, front street, DDI resolution, beautification, relationships, Borg Walk, front street, city manager process, which was not on your list last year or two years ago, something, UGB expansion project underway that will take a chunk of council time. A system for tracking goals, which you really don't have now. There is no, not only a system, but just, I could say, a standard operating procedure for how you use these goals. I want to talk to you about that, see how the ways you'd like to improve working goals, so don't let me forget to talk about that. And then shopping carts came up. That was your idea? Yeah, just, you know, an interesting issue there. So taking this, I'll take it on the wall, working with your existing goals, let's just talk about these things, these broad categories, in terms of what's important to you, what do you want to advocate for? So the intent is that this morning, we're going to walk through these broad goal statements, come to an agreement, and then just start filling in through the course of the afternoon with things that go in there, and putting that in the context of what's feasible. I want to, coming back to this. If you want to put this on the wall, I know you want to keep it. That the Madras city manager liked this one so much that it's still on the wall of council chambers. Just a reminder. Three contexts of thinking about this. And that is, want, need, and must, become a framework of thinking of prioritization for how this works. Want, need, and must. Must are those things where you have outside influence that is legally requiring you to do something. I don't think that's the case here, but for instance, if your water system is failing, suddenly that becomes an extreme need, or excuse me, a must. The need are those things that essentially are deferred maintenance or meeting a need in a community, things that there's some real priority, that these are things that we really need to do to move Cus Bay forward or to keep it in good shape where it is. Want are those things that'd be great to do, and I'm not saying don't be wants, because sometimes wants are the things where the life and social life of the community all come together around wants. But be thinking about, is this goal, or as we get into more detail this afternoon, this is all going to be a want, a need, or a must, to again, help think about where you're going to prioritize your available resources. And then, another one that I would suggest is feasible, you have to spell it, feasible, desirable, and viable. What that means is looking for those things that are desirable, that they will accomplish something. Viable means, okay, so that's desirable. Feasible means that you've got the means to do it, that you have the resources to do it, or you can create the resources to do it. And viable means it's actually going to work to accomplish what you're trying to do. It is something that makes sense. I actually stole this, we were not, after reading an article about Nintendo, and this is how they evaluate potential projects, they do it to the Nintendo Corporation. And it makes a lot of sense to me to use these two instruments to think about what you're doing. All right, so let's go back, open the floor, and talk about these goals.
One of the needs is still the housing supply. We've made progress, but we still don't have as much as the community needs, so that means we need it. I'd be curious to see a circle back at one point or a couple points. We had talked about the idea of maybe making a third urban renewal zone, so that we could do infrastructure development. So that might be something to talk about during this.
What about your economic development?
Uh, no, the URA we talked about was so that we can make infrastructure, so the housing supply can be developed economically. So it's kind of in between.
You kind of, it hits a multiple. The URA is, it's always a means to an end.
Yes.
And so have accomplished both housing and, in this case, it's mostly housing.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, all right. Cool, let's think about that. Other thing is on these nine, the question, are they still good? Are they viable?
I'm curious about working well together with partners. That seems more like a value than a goal to me.
What I also found in looking at the list is working well with partners in exactly one of the projects, which was making a strong emphasis on beautification of our community.
Yep.
Which obviously can be an interorganizational goal, but it kind of seems a little out of context of what the actual goal statement.
I agree with you. I think it actually should, I think that working well together is a value, and that the goal is actually maintaining a strong emphasis on beautification of our community.
One of the things that really emphasized in the mayor's report was the relationship with the other organizations right here. Kind of interesting, except it didn't mention, I don't think it said anything about relationship with the port.
Uh, no, it didn't, but.
Because we don't have one.
It did not. But it's something that we need to do. This is my personal view, that if we had a better working relationship a few years ago, it seems to be a little bit disconnected. I would like to see that brought back in to alignment, if possible.
Okay, so working well together isn't just beautification projects?
No, I mean, with the port, you know, we had, here's an example. We had our dike fail, and we're going to have to repair that. There was a disagreement on who owned the dike, and we had to step in and repair it to our cost. We thought we were going to recoup those costs from the port, we did not, but if the dike failed, it flooded the whole downtown. So there's an example there. And there's some other things that the port and the city have in common, that we should work together for economic development, in a lot of ways. It could even help our housing. They own 100 acres across the way that could be developed into housing. If they don't, we need to ask them to zone it to something differently, because it's compromising our ability to say that there's a shortage of housing. And so, you know, we need to think about rezoning it if they want to go back to industrial, things like that.
Sounds like a pretty big nugget to think about.
Could be.
Well, I think it's, I mean, I think that there's all, it's always been a bit siloed. The goals of the city are different than the goals of the port, then are different than the goals of the community, right? And so I think, I think what we would appreciate, I think, is just better communication and more transparency when, you might jump in at any time, when staff is dealing with the port. I think that would go a long way to help develop that relationship, is just, I think, a more, better communication and more transparency.
It all fits, the working well together with partners, that we might actually think about emphasizing maybe stronger with the port. Something to think about.
I guess to me, I think that the activities within the port, like you were saying, there's a facility component, there's an economic development, there's a housing supply component, and so. and so those specific strategies of working closer together with the port would be embedded within many of the goals.
You think the port's more in the cross-section of the goals than a goal itself?
I don't, I don't know. I still just think it's a value.
I would think you could make that same statement about the school district, perhaps, in terms of thinking about some of those sort of things. Just emphasizing, you're not in this alone. You've got partners, not only that you need to work with, but that you want to work with, because you share resources as well as constituency.
And I think the mayor and the staff has done an excellent job, you know, whether it's a relationship with the city of North Bend, making sure that the mayors are aligned, that there's a lot more effort that you guys work on together. The tribes, there's been an outreach, you know, to connect with the tribes, and so we're having quarterly meetings. So to Sarah's point, I get your point, Sarah, but at the time these goals were written, I really felt like, and I still kind of feel like it should be a goal, because I think that continues. If this community is going to be successful, making sure we have those strong working relationships is critical to its success.
Do you think that raises to the level of having another goal statement about working with the port, or just to make sure it's in the context of?
I think it's just in the context.
Because all of the things that you've mentioned and that Councilor DeNovo mentioned are important. It's not just the port, it's the tribal entities, it's the school districts, because those are embedded in our community.
And one that's missing is the county. And county, it's critical to our EGB, it's also critical to public safety, you know, with the jail and being able to get that open and operating efficiently. So I think the county's one that was not on there.
Are any of these statements, you know, outdated and taken off the list? Are they all still viable?
Well, I think street sidewalks and parking lots are going to be viable for, I think we've got about 40 more years, don't we? But I think streetlights could probably be taken off of their trip.
That's right, you did the LED project.
And I don't know if parks, I feel like we've, maybe parks can be taken off. I thought we were moving in the direction.
But we have a master plan, but my opinion is that there's some, we need to find a way to facilitate those, that plan, and both parks need some major infrastructure. And so I don't know.
I want to mention Mingus Park.
Maintenance and maintenance. I mean, I understand we're going to, John X. leaving, am I correct?
Correct.
And so are we, and then we're, so we're going to move somebody up from parks into that position, and that we're not going to refill the position, right?
He's going, we haven't, we are replacing John X.'s position. It's a person, the position has a linear responsibility in John's.
But so, but we're going to be short one more person, I guess, in parks?
No, Roger's not saying that.
No, that's not the case?
No, we'll replace, the person we've just moved up, his position will be replaced.
But I think we have, what, three?
We certainly do not have enough. I think that's where you're heading.
Right, so we, you know, we have, I don't know how many parks, but two major parks plus some other parks, and so the maintenance is difficult for them to do. And so, in fact, I'm the one that mentioned to John, you know, is there a possibility that we can contract out to help relieve some of that burden? I don't know if it's viable, does it, can we afford it in the 20% cost that we have? I don't know. But would it offset that cost somewhere else? I don't know. Anyway, because it's difficult.
So parks stays on, is what I'm saying.
Well, no, I think it should, probably.
Well, I think it should, because, I mean, if the idea here is to give the staff direction on what the council would like to see, I would like to see more effort made in the parks.
I agree.
So that'd be more like parks, if that includes funding expanded park services? It's going to be funding.
I think it's important that there's also on here athletic and sports fields. We're going to lose a chunk of those that were over in North Bend, so we might need to look at how we make some new sports fields.
Which ones?
Well, I mean, it's not officially sports fields, but you remember Banger's school site?
Oh, right.
Yeah, it's turned into housing, so. Community will need a little more spaces.
They're working on that with other entities, so.
This may be one of those ones where it may not be feasible, because of the amount of space that a sports field or sports complex takes. If you had a four-field sports complex, you need 25 acres. So where do we have within city-owned properties that are 25 acres?
That are flat.
Correct. And then you also have to look at, is that going to be too big of a competing project to compete against your must-do, and which is a library?
Yeah, I think, I think a sports complex is, I mean, it's a pipe dream, in my opinion. It's a dream that, you know, I don't know if we could accomplish. I mean, maybe doing another field or enhancing something like that, maybe, but not a sports complex.
It looks like it was considered in your, in the last goal setting, and was not feasible in John Toppets Park page, I guess they're not paged.
Correct.
Numbered.
We actually looked at two different, you looked at the 40 acres above Cascade Farms, which, majority of it is actually in the watershed, and you have no legal access to the property. So that was a barrier. And then we did look at John Toppets Park. Hearing what we heard from the voters, I doubt that that would be within their approval.
Probably won't make that one.
But at the same point, you have the Mingus Pond, which really needs to be dredged. It's a million-dollar project. So would we be better off working to maintain what we do have versus trying to create something new?
I think where that, where that goal can go is to help facilitate a grassroots effort and maybe provide some support from elected officials or staff, because I think, I think it's getting to the point where, you know, it could, that's part of my job over at the airport, is they do have acreage, and so, you know, there's been a lot of people approach, and, and, you know, putting that, helping to get that together is, that grassroots effort together, because it's, it's really something that has to be started somewhere before it can be brought in, because we do have so many obligations to facilities that we already have at the city.
I agree with Joe. I don't think that this is, I think this is a pipe train.
Question from the position of not knowing at all, would it make sense to think in the future, I'm sure you have thought of this, the possibility of a regional parks recreation system?
I think it would be great if that could happen. And I think some regional other things would be great, too, but I don't know if we can get there, but this might be a way to start.
Sure. It's been tried, I think, but it kind of fizzles out. But I think that's where it's probably going to have to come from.
Yeah, it does seem the way we should, we've got a lot of options, funding, location.
Yep.
Shared management and efficiency. Yeah, a lot of things are like that, we have two cities that invite each other. We, city manager types go, this is a no-brainer, and then the political types say, I'm going to do that. Anything really new to put on this list? Very broad.
I mean, I think that the beautification of our city, I see that it's embedded with working well together with key partners, however, I think there should be greater focus on that.
So actually pull that out, and it was kind of like I said, like I was kind of strangely placed under working well together. I'll just put it down here for consideration.
Could it supplant the parks position? If we're going with that being fairly unfeasible, if we went with beautification and rolled in some of the parks aspects, is it collaborative, do you think?
I mean, under beautification, I see some of the conversations we have been having about signage. Roger and I have talked off and on about the landscaping that needs to happen around the city. Like general cleanup, like beautification, I think is also like the work, and I know it's embedded within our empire master plan, but some of the work that needs to be done to tear down derelict buildings. So I think it goes beyond parks.
I was just looking at a way to keep it to nine. Looking at where to cut.
Well, it also, it falls under economic development as well.
I was just going to say, it's really under economic development.
I mean, your beautification is all, a lot of it's through your urban renewal district. It's, and it's funded through there, such as you're building improvement projects, because it improves the appearance of those buildings. Can't use urban renewal for maintenance, so that's a, landscaping's out for that. But the reality is you have a portion of funding from your TLT dollars that can be used for that.
But beautification or economic development is like the boardwalk. Now, we can use URA on that to upgrade it, because it's been a period of time where we're replacing some.
Yeah, if it's a capital improvement, which a lot of the projects there are.
The other big-ticket item that seems to be sitting out here a little bit is the process for replacing Roger when he retires, which we know there's intent to move it to Nicole, but is that going to, will that engage the council deeply? Is the council really agreed on this succession plan, this in absolute?
So I'm the one that put that on the list. And the thing is, is that we've talked about it, and I think everyone assumes that Nicole will step up, but it hasn't been vetted, and it hasn't been discussed. And I just think we need to make sure that if this council feels that's the way to go in the near future, they need to say that. Or if not, then they need to say something differently, because this isn't a process that you just do overnight, as you and Roger and I know for sure. I've been down this road a couple of times, unfortunately, but that's the point. The other thing is, is that Roger hasn't committed totally that he might stay here. I hope that he does. I think Nicole would like him to stay if she takes that position and be in like an economic development position. Roger, I think, enjoys it, he's very good at it, and I would like to see that the case. If that's not the case, then I think that we need to think about putting an assistant city manager in there with some of those qualifications. Anyway, those are just my thoughts, real quick, and I know I'm only one, Lucinda, out of all of us, so everyone else can try me.
We're not going to debate that point today, but the point is, does it raise to the level where it ought to be on the list as something the council wants to actually have as an agenda item, which may take more than one meeting even, who knows?
I think it is on the list, because we're talking about transparency, too. And even though the public may not be engaged in that process, they've elected us to be engaged in it. And I think they also need, that's a two-way street. They need communication as to what's happening on the administration, because that's when we get in trouble.
Hey, Gray.
I just reminded quickly of Gladstone, about three years ago, it all went away in the pandemic, it was probably about four years ago, did Gladstone gold setting. And they realized as they sat there that there were four department head positions that were going to become, well, we had retirements that were coming up in the next two years. Plus, they were building a city hall, a library, and a civic center, and they said, no goals. They just flat out said, there's no way, no goals. So something to be mindful of is just think about the amount of time that's going to take you as a council to work on these.
Can you remind us, Roger, when that transition's supposed to happen?
My last day as city manager will be the end of June of '24. And I would just say that I've been trying to be purposeful in the timing. State law allows me to stay, because I'm technically retired now, allows me to stay on full-time until the end of 2024. I chose not to do that, because elections will be in November of 2024. And should there be a large change on the council, I don't think it's proper to then hoist upon a new council that decision-making. You'll all be here in June of 2024 with a substantial amount of time on the council. I thought it'd just be better timing for the, for the city. It really is nothing about my timing. I don't plan to go anywhere, I mean, this is my community. I love it here, and my wife says I can't stay home.
He's also running for council, that's the reason that he's really going to do it in June of '24, he's going to run for council.
So.
He's in North Bend.
He lives in North Bend. That might be a good idea.
He should run for the city council in North Bend and still be over here with us helping innocent and protection.
That's a goal number one, working well together.
Yes.
This is where you get even, so.
Roger, I noticed you didn't, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'll just say, I mean, I agree with what the mayor said about this, but we also got to be careful what we wish for, because it makes me think about the Oregon football program, where they kept promoting from within and within and within, and they built this culture, and then they brought in somebody from the outside, and now they're on their third coach in four years, so.
Roger, I noticed you did not answer the question, though, that the mayor had said, which was a different role with, within the city. And so I think that needs to be vetted in short order, so that we can decide how we want to proceed as a council. And you don't have to give an answer at this moment unless you want to, and it's a yes. But honestly, I think that we need to answer that to figure out how we're going to proceed. Do you have any comments on that, Roger?
Well, you got into the mic for that one.
I did, yes. And I do not move my head.
Maybe I'll use John as an example. I don't plan to retard, I mean, I don't plan to just stop and not do anything. And I joke that my wife says I can't stay home. The reality is I have to do something.
Okay.
And so I'm going to do something, and if I had my brothers, I would work for the city that I love.
And that's my own heart. I'm older than he is, and I still, I love it. I love working with Oregon's magnificent communities.
I guess I'll just say to that also, though, like, I think that the way that, like, I hear you, and bring, you know, the transparency, and I think that is important, that people are, that there's communication and people are aware, but the succession planning that you've put in place as a city, not only with the city manager, but with other roles within the city, is, is, I think, why we have so much strength. And so I don't think we should dismiss that at all.
Well, we're up to 11 items on the list. Roger, does that concern you when you see the list that has tagged on two more items that are on there? Which was, oh, I'm sorry, well, it's.
Well, I think, John, the beautification was, I think, considered to be under economic development, am I correct, or not?
Well, I think what I heard everyone say is that beautification's woven into multiple of the other goals.
Would there be concurrence on taking it off? I guess under full understanding, that would get woven into the others. So really, what leaves is the city manager recruitment process as a goal, something that will take your time, something to be mindful of. Otherwise, Roger, do you have any of these that you wish wasn't there?
No, I think those are still all important.
Sorry, can I note one more, though? If we look at communication, many of the goals that were listed within communication, I cannot find them now, have been accomplished. Haven't they?
Well, yeah, some have been accomplished, but we've got new ones. I think it still needs to be. I mean, honestly, from my perspective, we just talked about the recruiting process for a city manager. And if we are going to recruit from within, I would rather have the current city manager's focus be on helping develop Nicole and making sure that she has all the tools to be successful, instead of working on a Kusbay update every Friday. I feel like personally, that we need a PR firm. I know that's going to take some money, but we're hiring someone to do that. I also, I know we've made some strides in our social media and things like that, but I still think that we have opportunities to improve that. And I would imagine, Councilor Kilmer, it probably feels the same way I do about this.
I was worried about getting an organized firm to do that. I think there are particular times when you need it, we've used that. But I, I think it, communication, oh.
Maybe I should provide some clarity. I generally only work on one article. The rest of the articles Uh, the rest of the articles are, are put together by staff. Uh, or we're taking them from somebody, uh, some other organization.
Yeah.
Uh, so I only work on one, one art- article a week. Uh, the rest of them, the majority of those articles are actually coming from our staff members.
Nicole, you have two, sir.
Yeah, I would just add to that, um, we actually have an individual who manages the whole newsletter. She takes all of those pieces. She goes out and finds the graphics and the things that kind of beef it up and make it the beautiful thing that it is. She's doing that for us. And then we also have a staff member who needed to change some things in their life. And they are moving away from a staff position to a consulting position to focus on Facebook, getting us on Instagram, releasing on Twitter, updating our website, making it more searchable. So we're gonna have two distinct individuals with very focused efforts to hopefully improve our communication lines.
So who's gonna respond to commentary that we see?
That would be another person.
Because, you know, here's an example. We just had what, something posted that, and it start, it stems from our newsletter and it gets on there. And I saw Stephanie stepped up and answered one piece of it. And then be- because, and it's not, it's not that we wanna put a personal spin on it, but we want factual information to be put on there because it spins out and then all of a sudden we can find ourselves in a problem. Um, you know, going back in time, you know, when the Black Lives Matter was going on, we had no one, uh, overseeing those commentary and saying that we do have things in place and that we do have D E I and we do have this and we do have that. And I think sometimes we just have got to make sure that we have somebody that's gonna be able to interact, uh, only factual. I don't wanna get into personal, uh, feelings. I know there's a fine line there. But otherwise, uh, because that's the way of the future, in my opinion. Social media is something that's gonna be out there. We're also gonna be virtually online all the time now and trying to integrate people coming in. So it's important that, uh, we have someone to, uh, oversee that, you know?
I, I think Nicole actually shares, uh, your thoughts exactly. And that's why she's created this contract position to actually do that.
Go ahead.
I just wanna make sure that, that, that contracted position has someone who has a communications background, is skilled at doing that. It's definitely a gift. And so, uh, and that's really my focus on that PR firm, that, I mean, they know what they're doing. And I feel like the city has always led, uh, in, in most things. And so in terms of how we communicate, I think North Bend has done an excellent job in the last year in terms of how they're communicating, the information they're putting out to their citizens. And so, um, I, I think a PR firm would help us, I know that there's a cost to that. Um, maybe create some sort of, um, overarching, um, kind of roadmap to, to success for the city because I still think we're behind the eight ball on this one.
So when, when's this person that you contracted with coming on?
Um, it just, she just changed, I think, the thirteenth was her last day as an employee, so we're...
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Should we just call this list solid where it is? Then we'll go back and get to work on the new cases. Why don't we take a ten-minute break? We'll come back at, uh, ten to fiveish. I misspoke when I said there's only one goal for working well together. First one's making focus on regionalism, and then we got to beautification. But let's try to look at these sub-goals and determine where you wanna go with them. Many of these that are, we're talking about so accomplished or so unfeasible that they just go away. Others need to be brought forward, and then brought before, and those here to stay. What they're here is you deciding how much of a communication tool this is in the context of people seeing it. Other than that, this, you know, is a one-time report. What they talk about is, at the end of the day, is how you want the goals to play. Do you want a case report like this much more often or whatever? I don't get the ways cities do that, those that choose to do it. But right now, let's just take a look, making focus on regionalism, efforts to address the issues and opportunities. So starting with that. Think about that, comments on that, staying on the list, going away, changing.
So I will say, whereas you're thinking about that as far as regionalism, that you have a number of different, uh, organizations that work on regionalism. Uh, in the area of economic development is through, uh, S C D C, South Coast Development Council. Uh, we are a member of that.
C C D.
But the port isn't. So when we look at regionalism and it's been identified, is that one of those, um, things that we need to work better on with, with the port? You, yes, you do the V C B, that's also economic development, uh, tourism. Uh, you're working on regionalism in your homeless. You're working on, with regionalism on your, um, your housing development, uh, not only through the Housing Action Team, but through our partnership with Kuz County and, um, um, Northwest Housing Alternatives on a low-income housing project. And we could probably go through a number of different things. Um, Jim works with, uh, I thi- it was called SWAC. I'm not sure if it's still called SWAC, Southwestern Oregon.
Southwest Area, uh, Com- Commission on Transportation.
And the reality is even down in the management level, each of the departments work with their counterparts. Uh, that the fire chiefs works with the, uh, area fire chiefs. Um, there's a local law enforcement administrators network that works together. And we're obviously now becoming a more regional player in the realm of, um, dispatching services. And I expect that, um, in the next two years, I expect us to be the only dispatch center.
Well, and there's two results on here that I would like to see us continue for sure. And that's the C D B G grant for the housing repairs and also the social worker at the library. That community engagement specialist has done amazing things and it'd be a real shame to see that, Ann.
Well, the only one, I mean, are we looking at taking something off is what you're asking, John?
Yeah, is anything that could come off the list?
You know, the only thing I can think of at this point is nine-one-one dispatch because we've kind of accomplished that. Uh, I mean, we've also have set up in case the county decides to come over at some point, we're set up and ready to go on that, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, I can see that, uh, but the homeless crisis is, is pending and I, I don't see this going away anytime soon. You know, the V C B, uh, I don't know, maybe that could come off, Lucinda?
I feel like, I feel like we've accomplished everything. Um, I would hate for us to lose sight of that relationship, so I don't know how, uh, the council feels about that. Roger, did you wanna say something?
Well, I think, um, the purposeful steps that's been taken to this point has stabilized, um, that organization. Uh, and it's, of course, been built upon in just, just the most recent. I think what you wanna do is, I don't think you need to build that relationship, but you just need to maintain that relationship.
Yeah, so maybe there's a difference with under religious, you know, maintaining and enhancing, maybe two different areas.
Right, they are. A lot of communities choose to just take ongoing stuff off the list. And make your list real long and kind of cumbersome. Others want it on there just so it's a reminder.
Yeah, I think it's, maybe a reminder would stay on there.
And Roger likes to check things off his list, so. We could cross out the part, it had get a T L T for Charleston and that got done.
Yep.
Yep, so that's all.
Well, and, and when this came on, I'm, this was two years ago? And this carried over from two years prior, am I correct?
It did.
So, you know, at this point, when this was put on, V C B was, um, in a very, uh, non-stable position, I guess, yeah. And, uh, and that, it's changed considerably since then.
Oh, yes, is there consensus to make the nine-one-one set or off the list?
Yes.
Yep.
It's been a compromise. Okay, and the V C B, what would be your preference?
Uh, as a maintenance type one, I would think.
I would like, I, I, of course, I'm coming from the tourism sector. I would like to make sure it stays on there in some capacity, just as a reminder of the contribution tourism makes to the community, so.
Okay, so it suggests that we do a maintenance category.
Can I just ask the process question, though? Because we're talking about status results. We're not talking, I mean, so there's lots of things that aren't on here. of things that aren't on here already, right? Like, the port is not listed on here right now.
No, that's why it's up there.
But, I mean, this is just status results.
Right. So, really, what we want to get back to here is the task, making focus on regionalism. And let, okay, let's just affirm that, and keep that on the list.
Yes.
Yes.
Didn't think that one was going to go off. All right. Press on, next page. Here we go, do that, documentation discussion. Falls under working with key partners. Seems like it's kind of, in my mind, it's got in sort of strange placement, other than economic development.
I think it fits with key partners, because we're going to need to look at more partnership in order to continue on this front due to funding, it sounds like. Remember, every time we've talked about parks, that we don't have enough money to do anything else with parks so much. But I think if we could partner with groups like the Friends of Mingus Park, I think they're very effective, and get their models spread out across some of these other places. Pirate Park is maintained by the High School now, so that's a partnership. Maybe?
You'd be likely to expand the statement to say emphasis on verification of community in conjunction with community partners were appropriate.
Yeah.
I like that, because if you look at the results, that's, it's things that we couldn't have done without partners. Like, we didn't, I mean, we provided some funding for these things, but we didn't actually do them.
John, I don't mean to digress, but going back to page one, we had talked about the relationships with the two federally recognized tribes. I know that we have, we're meeting, some of us with members of Tribal Council of the Koko Indian Tribe, but I feel like there's opportunities to meet with the Confederated Tribes of the Coos, or Umpqua, and Tsai, so Indians, so I don't know if that goes here with just those working relationships. More work with the tribes, and I know Carmen has expressed that sentiment, this group knows how I feel about it, I don't know how else the council feels about it. Because quite honestly, what I think is, there's opportunities to partner, and there's monies that both tribes could provide as federal governments to help accomplish goals for the city.
Yeah, I was talking to Andrew Brainard the other day, because he attends a lot of these, and he's with the Confederated Tribe, and it sounds like they're going to move that role more to one of their other folks, so we may have a central point of contact coming up soon. I know that's been a challenge in the past. So, it could be a good time to do that.
Okay. Put it up there as a potential add. We'll confirm that when we get down to the discussion next week. Okay, working well together, working with key partners, anything else? Add emphasize, we also maintain a strong emphasis on verification, oh, wait, that's the same one, sure. Okay. But what do you want to do with that strong emphasis on verification of community? Are we going to change it to either conjunction with community partners? Is that good enough, or does it need to be moved to some other home for it to rest?
Well, I feel like it's, I feel like it's Economic Development is where I think it also belongs.
But isn't it under Econo- Economic Development, too? Is it in two places?
We're sure to put it under home. No, really nothing there. Should we think about putting that under both? Super. Any commentary on the tasks Roger provided? I know there's a lot of stuff underway.
Do you mean on the status results?
I wish we didn't have to pump stations, but.
I'm sorry, sir?
You asked about the task, do you mean, is there a question about?
The status and results, not the tasks, I'm sorry, I meant the status and results of, if I listen to that.
I did have a really interesting conversation with the team at Wash to Shore, where they are looking to offload some of their past structures. And we had a dream session where we talked about placing those structures throughout Coos Bay North Bend with some sort of, like, art map.
Cool.
They have about 20 that they'd like to get rid of, so it's pretty significant. It reminds me of what they do in Grants Pass with the Bears, have you been there? So, I think there's a real opportunity to partner closer with Wash to Shore, and so we're talking about status results, I want to highlight that one.
Absolutely, I mean, this, how long have we been trying to get them to do something here? I don't know how long it's been, Sarah, I mean, four years, five years, I don't know.
Yeah, it took a change in leadership.
Yeah, it did, and so now I think that we're there. I mean, I thought we should start putting them around the city, so I think they've been an attraction, so.
Maybe without the Iron Rock Gate.
Well, the only thing I will say, well, yeah, I agree with you, but I also think it's an opportunity for education, right? Because of their mission, so I think it fills, you know, it fills a whole bunch of cups. I don't know, I don't, we could do it without the fence, I'm.
But the fence was required by them.
They said it wasn't.
No?
Yeah. They said that was the city's decision.
I just think the West Coast fencing sign needs to be taken off of it, I'm going to keep beating that one.
I mean, you do have a homeless crisis, and if you want to keep the structures in good condition, I think.
They said that they would commit to coming and cleaning up the structures if they were vandalized, because they also are anti-fence.
They said that?
Yes.
Leah said that, or Katie?
Yeah, Leah said it, yeah.
Okay.
Well, maybe Roger could get that in writing, and then we can go that way.
All right, but so, did we also get that commitment from Katie, though?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Cool. Reasonably creative, thank you. All right, anything else on working well together, working with partners? It's, I get, I'm just brainstorming myself, any legislative agenda or anything to come up that's important to think about, or that is kind of ongoing and we can watch it and read? Okay? Let's talk about wastewater. Take over day-to-day operations, we'll take that one off the list. These sides of the water do an access road, in progress, so probably can come off the list. These are designs for wastewater plant, in progress, in fact, we're going to get all of these, they're in progress until we get down to number five on the next page. Oh, wait, by that side of the pump stations, okay. So, upgrade the laser design of all the pump stations.
But I think if they're in progress, I'm not sure they should be taken off, because they haven't been completed yet.
We believe that.
I mean, we have a parking lot on here that's been on here for six years, so.
We should definitely keep wastewater plant one on the list.
Upgrade. We're not replacing it, we're upgrading it.
Yeah.
And it's only phase one of three or four phases.
Four.
But it is.
Just that we come up with another column, which is really to be done and in progress, or maintenance of this stuff. Okay.
There were some really specific things that staff reported on this in the email you sent to us, are those highlighted here?
No, but there's some infill and infiltration reduction projects that have been identified, which is important for you as a council, in that if we can reduce the infill infiltration that has to be treated and cleaned, that will cut operational costs. That could, of course, affect either reducing needed increases to the users, or we can undertake more projects with the funding that is saved.
I mean, I, now it's going to be on here forever, it's never going to go away.
Correct, but there are ti- I mean, there are other cities in our region that aren't undertaking these important stewardship projects.
Okay.
So, this, in my mind, your, this council has done an amazing job with the amount of money that's been invested in the utility that will serve generations in the future.
I had a really great conversation with now Senator David Brock Smith about this, and if we look back at the re- the opportun- the partnership note, it does seem like there's some strategies happening in Brookings legislatively even, and how they're looking at wastewater that maybe we can learn from, or share our experiences. But I think that there's, in our region, some coastal communities, I think he said something like, it's the year of wastewater, so.
For Brookings, or for the coast?
So, we were talking specifically about the, what's happening in Coos Bay and Brookings, but he just had some legislative strategies for Brookings specifically that seemed like something we should be paying attention to.
I mean, I would love it if there's some legislative things, but in the past, the state has never participated, as far as I can ever remember, and maybe going way back, but the state never gets involved. Usually, if we get any dollars, it's from the federal government. But, and even now, that's very minimal. So, I don't know, I mean, if he could get it through, to get some state legislation to help with wastewater, I'm all for it, but I don't know, it's going to be a tough pull-up thing. It's never happened in the past. I'd love it for David to get it done, though, yeah.
I've always regretted the fact that every city has a Friends in the Library, but they don't have Friends in the sewage treatment.
Exactly.
It's up to you.
We have a barbecue once a year out there. No one shows up, but they do. I've been there.
I know.
Super. All right, hey, what's with this started on hold, pump station, number 27?
So, that's an economic development project. We have a 400-unit planned subdivision that's been approved through the planning, but the project is stalled. It's in a location that's very challenging, has no utilities. So, it needs to have a pump station to pump it up over the hill, and then it can gravity feed down into the system.
That's an SBC project, I suppose?
No. What?
How are you going to fund it?
No, it's, how we're going to fund it?
Yeah. Developer funded?
No, we were moving towards a development agreement whereby we would do the design, engineering and design work, they would build it, it would be turned over to us, but we were going to do the, I guess, downhill capacity building projects that need to happen, if they need to happen. But that project is stalled a bit, although I can, I'm happy to report that they came and pulled their site development permit, or submitted their site development permits this last week. So, that's, that is moving forward, yet they haven't signed or put together the development agreement to have us partner. But as the mayor's aware, I've sent them a very pointed email saying, I don't know why you're not doing it, the council could change, and then it's going to be all developer-paid upgrades.
These were listed as sub-goals, each of these pump stations, last time, those, and they're all in progress, should they just stay on as they are here? Okay. Got it. Next page, wastewater utilities, I would currently anticipate, put on hold, board of the Council's Federation, adopted, would require sewer lateral inspections, completion necessary repairs, part of the sale problem.
I think we could better categorize that. It was reviewed, but not adopted. We're not, we're not moved, if I understood the council right, that's not something they desired to take on. And it really was championed by the former council president, who is no longer on the council and moved out of the area.
So, the question for you is numbers one and two there, one's accomplished, and the first one's put on hold, but actually it was not enough. Should we pull all that off?
Well, I, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't remember why we decided at the time not to do it, because I.
You mean the laterals?
The laterals, I think it is important, and I think for someone who is, you know, buying a house, the surprise of $5,000 or $10,000, right, expense, I think it's super responsible. I don't know if other cities do it, and Roger, I can't remember why we didn't agree to it.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe some background, we have 90 miles of pipe in the ground, and we're working on infill and infiltration projects. There is an equal amount of pipe in the ground that's privately owned, and that's the laterals.
Right.
And there is no way, other than when we find it, or when something totally goes bad, that it's found, that those are fixed. There's no proactive approach, other than smoke testing, that we do every six to eight years, if I've got my timing right. This is a good program, but there wasn't a great model in Oregon for it. I think Tillamook tried it, and then it got pulled off, and they were going to back and revisit it. But this is a standard program in California, mostly around coastal waters.
I think if we could do it in a fashion that the staff is not involved in it, for instance, that prior to the sale going through, the line has to be inspected and a certification of some sort, I think that would be something that maybe we would want to visit. But to put the staff again involved in this process, I think is not the right way to go. That's my opinion.
I think, two reasons, one of them was the cost, I mean, we already, and it kind of went ballistic here a year and a half ago, just to purchase a house. We didn't want to have extra burden on a people's ability to purchase a home. But also, we put in the warranty program, which gave people the option of assistance if those laterals failed.
True.
Question is, do you want to leave it on there, or come back and revisit it, presidential ordinance, that would address these concerns? Or should I die?
I think it probably should stay on. The only reason being is, is because if we're talking about INI within our 90 miles, this also is a problem, and creates a thing, and another, more an INI problem differently. But, I mean, I, again, if we, I guess we put this on there with a question mark of, like, you know, how would we proceed? Because, but I wouldn't put this as a top priority, I just think it's something maybe to keep on there as a, you know, placeholder, maybe.
Yeah, I feel like, I mean, we have a lot of goals, right, to accomplish, I get your point.
I mean, if something comes up in Tillamook, or something in Oregon that the staff feels it's something that we could adopt, maybe then we could pick it up, I don't know. Roger, what do you think?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Very good.
So, what about this, the fats and oils, the fog program? Are we, is this up and going now? So, we have people getting inspected and turning in with their business license and doing all that?
We have started.
Very good. All right. Booyah.
I told one of my friends about us having that program, it blew his mind that we needed to say it. Why would anyone not just do it?
I know, I agree.
Now, we can take that one off. Concur? All right, city streets, sidewalks, parking lots, and streetlight infrastructure. Fourth Street, accomplished. Should we pull that one off?
Yep.
A slow piece of Coos Bay Boulevard, in progress.
That's going to be a big one.
It's going to take council time?
I'm sure it's so much council time, a lot of staff time, and a lot of dollars.
It still may take council time, because it'll come back to you in some way of how we're going to finance this, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's a good one. All right, let's come to a big step, one, design plans to improve New York Avenue and our Boulevard intersection, in progress. So, is that going to come back to council? That's not part of the updated imparts list? Who, right?
No, but if it was me, I would include it in the, and I'm not sure we've determined if it's really a master plan, or since it's within the renewal district, if we're looking at similar to what we did at Front Street, and make it an action plan to get to implement some of the goals of the urban renewal. But this one, I think, is important, because it's going to be the area's first roundabout.
Yep.
It certainly will have people coming into the council meeting to talk to you about that.
Yeah, I remember this came up last time. This is in my prior, yeah, people were, Charleston is not happy when we talked about this years ago, before, yeah, they weren't happy about it. We have people from Charleston.
Well, they can use the other road.
They, that's what they said they would do. Thanks, Stephanie.
Just going to blow down, maybe? Coos Bay's first roundabout, walk into the 22nd century.
The entire South Coast's first roundabout.
Wow, yeah, well, there's true, much more of the norm. When ODOT starts building roundabouts, you know that they're going to run by, and they're going to have those.
I thought Astoria had a few roundabouts.
Well, that's the North Coast.
It's like a different country.
They don't even.
That's part of Portland's west side.
So, that's if the word develop is implemented?
Yep.
City streets. We've got council annual report. Let's see if we can improve projects. We're doing that.
We are. We have the first draft, and I, this is one of those communication tools I think is super important. You've implemented the tough fees, the transportation utility fees. You implemented a special levy in the downtown urban renewal district, and you've made a concerted effort to fund street improvement projects. And a lot of them have been undertaken, but I think it's important to communicate to the public what is being done and how much, how much money is being spent and where it's being spent at.
Yeah, 'cause we get lots of comments about, we're not doing anything, and my pothole hasn't been filled.
Yeah.
Or new ones pop up.
Yeah.
All right. Next, this work with Cus Bay Downtown Association. We've talked about parking and sunning.
Yeah, and, and I failed you in this one. I said no progress to date. Actually, I missed an email from Jim where some work was done. One of the things that the downtown association wanted to do was that we'd have no camping in the parking lots. Well, you did implement that as part of your camping ordinance.
And since the signage right now in a lot of the lots has no restrictions, and because of our homeless problem and camping, shouldn't we have no overnight, no overnight parking or something in those fashions and on our signage? Otherwise, how can we implement it, right?
Yeah, we could find something. I don't think we can use the word no overnight parking because our parking lots are 24 hours and we actually have a, a fair number of people that actually live in the downtown apartments, and we have to have a place for them to park since it's a parking district.
Maybe no overnight camping then.
But there is some appropriate signings that, that can come up. We just need to remember that, that all costs money.
Right.
And we really lack in funding just sign replacement throughout the city. We probably would need $40,000 to $50,000 a year and may get them all replaced in a 10-year period.
Roger, is that why there's that intention for partnership with downtown association? Because they can go after funds that the city wouldn't not maybe be qualified for or?
No, it's, I think it's more been my intent. If you're gonna fund a partnership with the downtown association to implement Main Street, we really should partner with them when we undertake activities in the downtown. If they're a partner, they need to be a partner, in my opinion. And we'll, that's just building that relationship and bringing them in. Instead of them complaining because we've done something, it's-
They're members, you mean?
They're members, and those who help build it help support it.
And the other thing I think that, that is important to that partnership is the, to Sarah's point, is they were able to go out to get a grant to strategic, for a strategic plan on things that are gonna impact signage and, and those sort of things. And that, through COVID, you know, has been just kinda sitting there, but that is part of their plan coming into the new year, and they have some money available.
Well, I don't think it's a surprise to anyone that I am not happy with our relationship with the downtown association. Like, I think we lack accountability there for the partnership agreement that we have in place with them, so.
Well, I think they're necessary, and I think that we need to find a way to make them more successful. So, but, you know, they, they struggle because they have one director. And we, if we're going to help them, they're gonna need more than one person to be successful. If you look at what North Bend has just done recently, what that person gets is considerably more than the downtown association director gets. So we need to think about, I think we need to think about how we want to partner with them and how we wanna make them more successful. And if they become more successful and they can get more businesses in there, I think we can have an alliance that'll be beneficial to all. And I think it just needs some strengthening. You know, Sarah, I, I agree. I understand. But we need to find a way to help them, I think, and I'm not sure what that is.
And I think that they're in the process of restructuring or moving about some responsibilities to be able to carry out more of the director roles as opposed to doing project things with promotions. They, they've got a budget before them that has things that are going to help them.
Yeah, you know, I had a discussion with Holly after one of our meetings and talked to her about, you know, her interaction and accomplishing things. And she said basically, you know, it's her, and then the directors and these other volunteers are stepping up and saying, taking on these projects. Well, she said they're volunteers and I can't say, you know, you need to do this, right? And because it's the, the way it's set up, and so it's difficult. So I think that having some extra manpower or help or something can do it. And if we don't have the downtown association, then we are really gonna have a hole that we need to fill, and I don't think we have the capacity within the staff to do it. So I just think we need to find a way to get there, and I'm not sure what it is. So I understand what you're saying, but yeah.
I think that there's a consideration with the VCB and, and the work that Janice is doing, and maybe some, a different layer of accountability for the downtown association with support from the VCB.
I think the VCB is stretched pretty far, Sarah, being a member on that, on that board right now. We're just taking on the Charleston component. I think that the downtown association is in a place that the VCB was in probably 10 years ago, where we were looking at capacity, right? And so I think to Joe's point and to your point, I think there's opportunities perhaps to, maybe it's better funding, and since they're going through their own analysis of, you know, what roles people play in that organization, I, I think it's important to fund them. I know you and I are pretty focused on, we have like, we're pretty passionate about certain things. I know signs is, is your, is your thing. And in my head, as a, as a travel Oregon commissioner, and Roger has heard me say this, there's gonna be a small and midsize grant opportunity open up in April, and we're looking for signage, not only for the boardwalk, those interpretive panels for the tribes, but there's no reason why we can't ask for signage for the downtown association. And I feel like that is, the city should do that, right? So if we can find grants to do that, let's do that, and then let's continue. We should always look at making sure that we have good relationships and making sure that they make sense for both the city and, and that organization. But I think putting that on the VCB with all of the, we just went through a strategic planning process, and we have some pretty clear goals with what we're wanting that organization to do. I think putting the downtown association or adding that under, that, that makes, doesn't make a lot of sense right now.
Well, and the VCB is part of some of the Main Street programs, and it's, it's also important to remember that people that are working on citing businesses and things like that, look for specific things in a community when they're, when they're developing. And one of those is Main Street programs. And the way that it is done in this city, you know, to what Joe was talking about, what's happening in North Bend is very different. So, you know, you, you can look and you can say, wow, this is really a visual thing that's happening over here, but it's structured differently.
To me, and I'm not on those boards, but it does feel like there's some duplication and there's more opportunity to, for those organizations, whether they're part of each other or not, to look at those strategic plans and where's their crossover. And if one person's focused on one thing, then let that agency take that so that we can, we can spread that capacity that I hear is an issue for both because what's happening right now isn't working.
Looking for efficiency of scale, basically.
If we were to pair them.
You know, while we're talking about the downtown association, and it doesn't fit with this set of goals or this goal topic or task, I just wanted to remind everyone that we have 150th anniversary coming up next year in one of the, our centennial was celebrated and planned for, which is now, that organization's turned out to be the downtown association. So we were, in my opinion, we need to partner with the downtown association, help us plan for that 150th anniversary, and that's within this goal-setting period.
Yeah, so I'd really like to find a way to strengthen the downtown association and how we can assist doing that. And here's the other things. I mean, I know they're lacking in some ways, but we've, remember, they do the Blackberry Arts Festival, they do the Fun Festival, they do the Farmer's Market. No one else is gonna pick that up if they go away. No one is. And so that's a problem. I mean, those are huge tourist draws. And the downtown association, besides the Farmer's Market, I mean, excuse me, the Farmer's Market with signage being a draw, it also facilitates a lot of people for the food program and the needs that they have. So we, I think there's a balance here, but we also, I kind of, if we can find a way to strengthen them and help them and help them be more successful, I, I think that's what we need to look at.
I absolutely agree with you. What I don't want to see happening is us continuing to sign a partnership agreement and not holding them accountable to the tasks that we are assigning them to.
But I think Stephanie has heard that, and she's on their committee and our liaison. And, you know, I think that she's emphasizing it, but it's that balancing, I think, that she, I can't speak for Stephanie. I shouldn't speak for Stephanie. But anyway, I can see, like, when I went and I made a presentation, you know, it, they should have more people show up and participate. Heidi Soss was there telling them, I will show you how to get a Main Street grant. I will show you how to help things. I was saying, you people need to understand we have improvement grants that you can come forth and we can help you with. So those are the things that we need to try to help boost them. You know, they've also gone down on the Front Street. We need to get those businesses at Cus Bay Village and Front Street to get into downtown association, things like that.
Well, and some of the bigger things that have happened, that have been, you know, a couple hundred thousand dollars, just would not have happened if we didn't have a Main Street program. So.
The other thing I'm super cognizant of right now is, this was the very reason I ran for city council in 2016, is because the previous council wanted to pull the agreement with VCB because they felt like the VCB wasn't meeting its objectives, and the city of Cus Bay was really disappointed by that. So I am really sensitive to this because I think we need to be really careful, and, and I, I understand your point of wanting to hold them accountable, but they're a one-person organization right now. And I think that we owe it to that organization and to this community to make that relationship work before we say, we don't wanna do this anymore.
I'm not saying I don't wanna do it. I just want the actual activities that are outlined to actually happen.
And, and I agree, and what's realistic and what's not realistic, right? I think that's, so, again-
Well, and maybe, maybe that, that is the point of what you're trying to say is, let's look at what we're requesting of them, and is it feasible?
Absolutely, yes.
Yep.
And if it's not feasible, then take it out of there so that-
But to every year, sign an agreement that we, that they're not meeting the developer's goals for is, is not doing anyone a service, them or us.
That's fair.
So could I suggest that maybe you put a goal about evaluating and working to improve outcomes with the Cus Bay Downtown Association under economic development?
Sure. Yep.
Is it economic development or working well with partners?
Both.
It really is about economic development. And I think while Mayor Inglekey said it, she said that, you know, in order for cities to thrive, you have to have a thriving downtown. It's an important component of, of any city, and it's very true for our downtown.
I've been at three presentations where that has been stated over and over, and you can see, you can see what's happened. And even, you know, Greg Drobot and Rob Crocker that you talked about at the WBC, it's, it was, you know, those, that, that program of, of a Main Street program has really led to economic development, not just here, what we've seen in the past in this city, but in other communities that have implemented that program.
Yeah, you know, Heidi Soss made the comment at the downtown association presentation, and she said, Front Street is part of downtown, and without downtown being successful, we in Front Street and Cus Bay Village won't be successful. And she's right. I mean, she's absolutely correct. So we just need to try to tie the pieces together, help facilitate it. And I think, Roger, you're on track if we can put that on there and see how we can strengthen the relationship.
The other thing Roger brought up was 150th anniversary. Is that something that the VCB would block out on here?
Probably.
It's gonna happen with or without you.
He said.
Yep. The reality is, if we don't make this a priority, that 150th anniversary will come and go without the celebration.
Right.
So where would you put that on?
Well, that's why we hire a professional consultant to assist the council in- Sorry, John.
Go up a summer. I'm reminded of an address. I did this goal-setting work from address in March of 2017. So what happened in the summer of 2017? Solar equals.
Oh, that's right.
Oh, yeah.
Which happened with or without that. So they adopted one goal, which was to survive and prosper from solar equals.
They did.
Virtually, they put everything else aside and worked on that. And then we had some subsequent goals identified after they did about a month off after the, it looks like they have an air show the next week. So they, yeah, they just set everything aside. But in a lot of them, they're really focused, really focused. So we'll put 150 probably under economic development or partnership or any of it?
No, I think it can be under economic development. Sure, I could promote it correctly, it will be economic development.
Yeah, I agree.
So do we wanna bring in tollships for that?
You know, Drew.
Cannot believe he said that.
I do.
I think we had, we had a presentation, so maybe that will happen.
I think, yeah, I heard that they are back traveling again.
Yes. Gonna kick you.
You came here for the tollships, it was no win.
Oh.
So we motored our way out to the bridge and that.
Still a beautiful trip.
It's still beautiful. It's great. It's great. All right. On city streets, sidewalks and parking lots. I had a great conversation with them all those days.
So, and one of the things that we've done and the council has done over the last few years has been purposeful about designating and approving a segment of funding through urban renewal to replace sidewalks. And I remind you that under our charter, that sidewalks are the responsibility of the abutting property owner. Although, we went through, our forefathers went through years ago and put street trees in, and those street trees destroyed the sidewalks. And I, therefore, in essence, it's been our responsibility to replace those sidewalks. We have been putting, I think we have 150,000 this year, but we have been putting $80,000 in and going through and being purposeful in trying to replace some of the sidewalks. We're actually going to court over a sidewalk issue. I think we're scheduled for August on a claim. So I think it's gonna be important to continue, and I think we're building a roadmap on what we've done already and when we did it. But it'll take us probably another 20 years to replace those sidewalks.
I, I think it's worthwhile that in, in the urban rural district downtown, it makes sense. Outside that, I don't think we can have the capacity or the resources to do it. So I, I mean, downtown, I think it makes sense, and it helps beautification, it helps them make look better. It enhances tourism, business, everything. So I think it's great.
And Empire.
And Empire, we have the same, we can do the same thing. But we've done a lot of sidewalks out there.
We've done some sidewalks in Empire.
I mean, Empire Boulevard, it was all redone. I, at one time, I think we did a lot of the main Empire District in sidewalks. And so, yeah, I'm sure there's some other areas that need attention too. Absolutely.
So how are, how are you determining which streets need to be repaired next?
The streets where staff is using the pavement, was it, there's a term for it.
Pavement condition index, PCI. And that was done about 10 years ago, and we're working, we're working that plan. It identified streets that needed improvements, kinda put them in a hierarchy. And we've just, we're keeping track of those streets, and the ones that rise to the top each year are the ones that we try to address.
Are you getting new things added to that as well?
Yes.
And, and I would say it's not just solely on the PCI. It's not just the, the one that has the worst street condition that gets there, but there's been a desire to make sure that we spread that there's projects happening in East Side, Inglewood, Empire and central Cus Bay. In addition, some of the streets, even though they're not durable, work's been undertaken on them so that they can make them last longer. It was more of a resource management, so we can make the resources go a little farther. There's been a tremendous amount of money spent on city streets over the last five years. And if I- And if I remember right, somewhere in the neighborhood, if I remember correctly, around 16 million. But it's just gonna take more. I mean, you've done some excellent things, and we've stayed true to your desires where, if you created the tough fund, no staff is coming out of that fund. That's all going on to the streets. It's about a million dollars, just under a million dollars a year.
That's amazing. I'm reminded of the city of West Leonard, very wealthy community, which has a current tax rate of 81 cents. And so they are scrambling budget-wise for street improvements and everything all the time because they cannot pass their adequate, just based on the Metroply Tax. Something like, what's your rate here?
6.36 cents, $6.36.
But we initiated a tough program. I don't know if, transportation utility fee?
Yeah.
And $10 per household is what generated the million dollars annually, so.
That's great.
Yeah, I mean, it took some persuading, but we had a lot of public hearings and involved the public and the dialogue, and even the ones that were the naysayers at the end said, "I don't like it, but I agree." So.
And it still comes up.
Have you ever seen that actually has a street fee?
I believe there were. We looked at other cities, and we evaluated whether it should be a gas tax or, and voters didn't pass that. So then we went to the next one. But that's, that's why the, the goal of putting out a report every year, since there is this assessment, how are you, how is that money being used?
Good news, good news. All right, and the sidewalks, we talked about the street furniture in progress. That's something that's maintenance, having to pass or is going to be called in?
No, well, I think we're evaluating two different options right now. We've been hit, like everybody else, with supply chain. I don't know why someone would call their business a big belly, but the big belly trash cans that we're looking at, those are, should be arriving here next month, at least the first set. But we've had some issues with our street furniture, one. The issue with the unhoused and those going through the garbage cans and then how it looks, again, back to beautification. So purchasing proper street furniture that's lockable, but looks nice and is functional, has been a goal. But I think we're, we're heading down that road. We've got a few of the smaller ones out, which have been excellent as far as our experience with them. They're not getting broken into, stuff's not flying out of them. But the, now it's getting the right mix and in the right locations.
So Mr. Murray, this has been a bone of contention for you, and it's been on the list for six years. So does this, where we're at with it meet your...
Yeah, we're moving forward. I mean, it's in progress, and I know they're waiting for it, but I think they're working. I think we need to evaluate, as Roger said, which ones should go where. I think these big belly buses, which can handle more capacity, will probably be in the high-traffic areas. We'll wait to see. But these ones are not working, no one's knocking them off. I mean, the only downside on what I'm seeing on some of the high-traffic areas, you're stuffing them full, and so we're having to empty them on a frequent basis. But, you know, I was thinking, what Roger had said one time before at the Empire Boat Launch or Boat Dock area, that we have a trash, trash receptacle, a big one, but it's better to have the trash going there than on the ground. So, you know, it's gonna be one of those balances. But anyway, no, I think it's, they look good, and they haven't been knocked over, they haven't been vandalized, and trash is not thrown around as much. It's just getting rid of those old trash cans that they're able to do, so. Yeah, I think we're accomplishing it.
If, if I was to make a suggestion, I think you actually could pull this off your goal list. I mean, it doesn't mean it's, it's gonna get done, but I don't know that it has to be the focus for the council other than if we're not fulfilling it.
That's great, yeah, that's fine. I'll make it the focus, I walk around a lot, so. That's fine, yeah.
All right, anything else on sidewalks that needs to be noted? And I haven't asked the same question for streets. Any other street or sidewalk focal points that the council might...
I'm curious if there's a place for the conversation we've been having about bikes and bike lanes and more bike accessibility within streets.
It certainly will come down to resources. So currently, you have a huge need to repair streets in order to make some bicycle-related improvements. It will just take resources. And generally, that's, so where you're gonna pull that from, that'll probably come from your street maintenance side. It's really gonna be a balancing act, what you, what you want to do.
Did we, okay, so we talked about the bike lanes. The individual has a bike shop downtown and some others. And then Carmen talked about, weren't they going to look at...
Sheroes?
Yeah, weren't they gonna look at, yeah, that, a bike lane? Right?
Yes, that's in progress.
Right, so I think that's our first step, Sarah, I would think. And then make sure that's a viable route. And then the other thing is, is that maybe we can start connecting up to Ocean Boulevard and maybe finish that bike lane. But I think this one step at a time, since we, it was requested of us by those individuals.
I agree with Sarah that we shouldn't lose sight of it, though, because we talk about tourism and, and, you know, making it a livable city for our citizens. And I think bike paths are an important element of that.
So am I hearing that you may want to include in your city streets exploring bike-friendly options?
Yeah.
I think we need to wordsmith it correctly, though, because if I were a citizen that's interested in having, you know, access for bikes, and I mean, we're headed that direction, I think it needs to be wordsmithed, so it's not something that they're expecting it to be financed, funded, and implemented in two years.
Yeah. You know, I mean, like, we're gonna do Front Street. When we do Front Street, the revitalizing Front Street, I know there'd be a bike lane in that, in that plan. So, you know, putting one there makes sense. And then, you know, as it's suggested, you know, going from downtown out to Mingus Park and back, maybe we can accomplish that. And then, you know, things like that.
That's where I think if you come from a part that where you explore options, instead of saying you're gonna implement bike-friendly.
I think I could say, "Start to explore options."
Yeah.
So we'll take that time later on.
Let's put that under economic development.
That actually might be a good place for it, because this is more stuff that's physical happening on the streets, and then...
Councilor Kimmer, I was...
Because it is an economic driver.
I was also being facetious, because I figured this would be a four-year goal, and we might have someone in economic development in two years that could, that could address this. So I was being a bit facetious.
Right, Roger. Well, now.
Well, I mean, we're talking about Downtown Association, maybe that's a focus of some of the things that they could help with, you know?
I'm also just curious about if the, if the housing project does move forward behind Cascade, and there's street improvements done on Ocean, is that a time? Then we can just fold some of those things in.
I do not recall, but I thought that part of the requirements was some restriping. And what was, I hate to use the word road diet, but I believe that that was to implement the road diet within that area.
That's correct.
Because of the challenges of the topography and the curves of the Ocean Boulevard that area.
Notice he's ignoring me. He's not looking, he's not making eye contact.
I'm not making eye contact.
I live in Empire and drive downtown a lot.
Okay, so we add lights. Anything else on your streets?
Do we get, are we doing the parking lots too? Are we there?
Now we'll talk to parking lots.
Okay.
Well, we got through sidewalks. Anything else on sidewalks? Okay, we'll talk parking lots. Yeah, well, six either, listen.
So on the Lockhart parking lot, I think you should keep that on there, because your goal is to get that constructed. You have the designs. We just need to go out again for...
A bid.
A better bid.
Okay.
And then you have work ongoing for the Front Street parking lot. I dare say you could add another parking lot on, because on Monday, I'll sign the quitclaim deed for the Empire property.
Okay.
For the old gas station. For a parking lot. So that's, that's a new project. And I know that under our assistant, or our deputy director at Public Works, she knows how to cut the red tape and get that parking lot done a lot quicker.
I hope it's, the red tape's quickerly cut, is that the correct terminology, than the Front Street one?
Than the Front Street one. I hope too.
Jeez.
Apartment, apartment lot in Empire. The others, Roger, any other inside, what about the on-hold one, second and Curtis?
Well, I think that one, we're, we're on hold because we're waiting on finances. Part of that financing is through your upgrades to wastewater treatment plant one. Local option dollars? I always get that wrong.
Sponsorship.
Sponsorship option dollars. But, you know, you really could include, if you wanted to include parking lots in a project that you're exploring right now is...
The charging stations?
Exactly, adding charging stations to one of the parking lots. And this, the one that's on hold, that's the parking lot. So it will get somewhat out of an upgrade. You could include it in that, in that, that one specific task.
Okay, good. Anything else on parking lots?
Well, we got that, replace the trash can. This is the one for six years that's been on there. I would like, because this is going to be beautification, is going to, you know, besides the parking lot, I would like to see, find a way to relocate this. I keep thinking it should go on Curtis. I know we'll get some pushback from Anna Marie, but I still think it should be there.
This one here, I think this one's a resource issue. You only have a finite amount of dollars for the Downtown Urban Renewal Agency, and you've taken on a huge project. One, you, in the last couple of years, you've increased the amount of money that's going to your building improvement project. And that's paying big dividends, because a number of big buildings have been improved. Your other one is you've dedicated, even this year, $500,000 to implementing some of the action plan for Front Street.
Right.
After we get done with that, you don't have a lot of dollars left. So if you're gonna do some of these trash enclosures, which I agree, those would be great things to have, I'm not sure they, they rise to the level of some of the other things you're doing.
Yeah, this would be, I think, years ago was 200,000. I have no idea what it would cost now. But if nothing else, I think that we could pressure the garbage facility company to replace the fence at least and make it look decent. I mean, they've destroyed it, and I think it's their responsibility and obligation, but...
Yeah, new garbage enclosures are a little more complicated, because they also have to meet with stormwater requirements or, because the water that runs off of them, which is generally through grease, gets into our bay, so we have some requirements. And, you know, 12 years ago, I was blissfully unaware of that.
Blissfully.
But, I mean, Roger, couldn't they just put a new fence up or replace the existing fence? We're not talking about a new enclosure. I still would like to see this on the list to be replaced, but in the meantime, a new fence, chain-linked fence with some slats in it, can't be that expensive.
Correct, and although, one thing that we've recently learned, a byproduct of saying that we could no longer put chain-linked fences in the Urban Renewal District will require us not to allow that to be put back up. So, but, that just means we have to come up with something different.
Okay.
But it needs to be fenced and screened.
I think it needs to be, and the thing is, I keep saying, Cooz Bay Sanitation, they've destroyed it. I mean, I've watched them actually destroy it. You know, they take that garbage can and they shove it in there, and they break down the fence, and it's, I think it's their responsibility. People opening up the gate and throwing it in there is not breaking the fence. You know, that's my take.
Well, if they want that 3% rate increase each year, franchisee.
All right.
I like your style. I was thinking the same thing. Do we need to take a break? I'll be one, I'll be one, take a break. I just figured it's a little hard. All right, let's take a break.
Hey, Jennifer?
We'll work our way up to lunch, we've got pretty...
On that funding that we're given for wastewater treatment plant one, is there enough? Have we identified all our projects yet? So on our wastewater dollars that we're, when we're looking at some of those sponsorship option projects, I think we have identified all the dollars. You could also do... And none of them are, none of them are tractable, which is why it's...
You kind of touched on the funding for the 52 year...
Well, actually, that's my right to say.
Yeah.
Haley has reached out to the Van Zijzen, and they think somebody's trying to get me? So...
It's like, oh, I'm going, I'm just going in the mirror.
I'm not 100% sure.
We get the mic, Roger?
I do have...
How much vacation?
The other thing that, she and I have built in... So how did it...
The guy.
Yeah, because I closed the lid, it went away. Um, alright, so why am I named George open at the end of? Now, why does this person put a mask on? Sitting there all by themselves?
Oh, now you got full screen.
Honey, I think it's been like that.
No, you've had a burger or a.
To be replaced anyway. Who's online?
Online?
Two's in the stroke.
Two's in the stroke.
Are you unmuted? You trying to make a comment?
No.
Alright, ready to move? Streetlights. Mark one off, huh?
Yeah.
Anything else on streetlights to talk about? Alright. Then let's talk facility. Start out with a library.
Second most used facility?
Well, I think maybe amend that and it's still a huge priority. One of probably, in my mind, one of your biggest priorities is to build a new library facility, but I would, you don't, I don't think you need to put where it's gonna be at this point in time because you're gonna be determining where that's gonna be.
Yeah, I agree, and also I think we need to add in here the survey that we're gonna be doing.
Yeah, I think you could add that under tasks or objectives, you're undertaking a community-wide survey to gauge support or opposition to either the library, the library's location, and/or the cost of the library. And of course, your other task.
Location and cost.
Correctly, and I think what we found, John, is that we, of course, we, we went out for a vote, it didn't pass, but we were hearing mixed messages from the community. Was it because we were looking at putting it in a park? Was it because we didn't have it in downtown? Was it the cost? So now the survey is to better, we're gonna show three different options and what will the community support? And then the other goal is that we wanna get it on the November 2023 ballot.
Maybe instead of build a new library facility, because I don't think even if we did have the funding, that would be done in two years, maybe it should read something like investigate options for a new library facility.
The only reason I don't like that, Rob, is we need a library. And I'm worried if we don't use action words like build.
So how about work to, work to realize a new library facility or work to build one?
Work to build, that's fine, I just don't want people to lose sight of it.
That would be your goal related task rather than a very specific one in the park. Work to realize a new library. Anything else under these tasks? And four of them under here.
I think you need to keep the other task beside your survey and you need your, your task related to funding and finding funding.
Except I think number two's already been completed, hasn't it?
Two, three, and four have been completed.
Those could come off.
Correct.
So really, it's survey, survey, or are we going to go on some tasks?
Survey and to play, well, I guess funding wise, it is, that's under number one, putting it on the ballot. That's a funding related task.
So we have three things. Well, work to realize a library is a new primary task, and then survey and then funding.
There's also cost estimates that we're doing.
Yeah, so I think that's, you put that under explore options. And explore options, you're not only looking at locations, you're looking at cost options.
Anything else on the library area? Alright. City shops.
Yeah, that, we talked about that in multiple ways, and I think the best idea by her is try to relocate it up in Empire and maybe that area down there could be restructured for more Deveraux and Palate Homes. I guess the old changers building, right? That we talked about, that. But the city shop could be up in Empire, I think would be a great spot, really.
Where are they right now? I'm sorry, I should know that.
Yeah, they're down there by the pallet homes, in that area.
Okay, got it, thank you.
So, and the reason we're looking for someplace different is that that is located in the flood zone, or the tsunami inundation zone. And as we continue to do better job at disaster preparedness, we need, we know that we need to move that shop and all of its equipment out of that area so that it's available for post-disaster work.
Is there enough room behind that, the property that we own behind Graham Dodge? Is there enough? We own that property still, right?
No.
No? The piece behind?
No, we sold it.
Alright.
No.
There's a great spot at the top of Topitz Park. No, I'm just kidding, totally kidding.
Do you know what kind of, how large of a space is it?
We probably, I'm gonna assume, need every bit of five or more acres. Ideally, and something that's being discussed with the water board, could we find a place to co-locate somewhere near the water board?
I was just gonna say, there might be something off of Ocean Boulevard between.
So are you talking about partnering with the water board for a shop? Do they need to expand their area too, or what?
I don't know that they need to expand. We were asked to wait while they look at their master planning process.
Okay.
Is that why there's no progress to date?
Uh, no progress to date because it hasn't been the highest priority. It's gonna take a substantial amount of space. I mean, we actually even looked at the National Guard armory.
So is that a possibility anymore still?
We've been told no every time we've asked.
That's a state thing, right?
Anybody said what they're doing with it?
Nothing.
No, I did see they're out there working recently.
They are?
While they were in the parking lot with equipment and doing a project.
Well, maybe it's a time with new, new leadership in the state, maybe we should reach out again and see. Might have better luck on that, something else, right Chris?
I think, I still think that's a long range issue that if, if we don't ever work on it and don't identify it as, as an issue, it'll never get worked on. And I think it's the same as the Empire Fire Station.
But sure, when, when we talk about facilities located out of the tsunami inundation zone, do we also get consideration to the fact that most likely there will be an earthquake associated with that? And so when we're citing or considering locations to cite buildings, we're considering that as well?
We should. I know that when we did the retrofit to this building, it was in part because of the possible earthquake that we could face. That's why this building is rated for a 9.0.
Okay.
Will it survive liquefaction? We don't know.
Yeah.
But you know, as you, you bring up a great topic and one that I failed to share with you, is I know our fire chief is looking to go after a seismic retrofit grant for the East Side Fire Station. Even though we don't currently man that station, that's a key part of our infrastructure and there are times when we have to man it. Getting it seismically retrofitted, one, it could, it could happen with state dollars instead of any city dollars, but then that building would be still standing should we have an earthquake.
So perhaps we could change the language slightly, that we're talking about seismic upgrades, and so we start using that language in all of our conversations of maybe citing new buildings or locations.
So I think when citing considerations, that we do so outside of the tsunami inundation zone and hundred-year flood plain, as well as making sure that they're seismically stable.
That was so much more articulate than what I said, Roger, thank you.
So with that, I would suggest, I mean, since we, it may take us a couple of attempts to go after a seismic grant, but specifically focusing on a building, and this is something that we would task our fire department to do, to go after that grant.
Anything else under facilities?
Just Chief Anderson, where, where, has there been any discussion with SWAC about moving Station Two out there?
Yes. I've talked with Dr. Patty Scott, and she's open to the idea of providing the real estate and at least their portion of the training portion of a new station. It's just a matter of funding. We don't have the funding, they don't have the funding, but they have, they have the property and they like the idea of a shared facility that would be protecting the community as an emergency response structure, but also a training facility for their students and their fire science program.
Facilities. Security Economic Development. UGV expansion, part of the process.
That one's really just gonna need some work. So what, we have a very unique situation back in the, the early days of Oregon land use. There was some titles given to areas that are considered by the county and by those that set it up as part of Kuzbe's UGV. And if I remember right, they're urban growth areas, they didn't call them urban growth boundary. And so that's been decades ago. As we begin to move forward, we wanna confirm that that's really what those are between both the county and the city, and I think there's just a process in place to do that. I thought we had a really good chance of walking ourselves right through that, but we've had a change in leadership on the county commissioner, so it might be a little bit more of a road, but I think it's just a task that has to happen and we need to be prepared. If we can take those steps today, when we need that urban growth boundary adjustment, which currently is our city limits per DLCD, we can, we can take a little bit of the red tape out and be prepared. But I think this is a planning thing for the future, but it has to happen today.
Well.
Well, I, I think it can be accomplished a little bit quicker. I have a little bit different take on it. So first of all, we're gonna have coming before us from the planning commission asking us to make sure that we move forward on this within a year, because I watched the planning commission meeting. So what needs to happen is we got the planner from the county, Jill Roffel, or Roffey, she's on board to do this. You need to do a land use plan, change amendment with the county, and a land use change plan with the city. That can happen, that's a pretty easy process. Now, whether the county will still move forward with the county commissioners is another thing to determine, but I think that we should take that step. We have a new planner, I think Chelsea has a relationship with Jill, and I think that we can get there and at least get the urban, have this start moving forward, and hopefully the county will accept it and we can accept it. That doesn't mean that we need to annex in anything because that's another process, but we could at least set up the boundaries. And I don't think it's, I, maybe I'm really thinking about this incorrectly, but I don't think it's, the land use plan just needs to be amended to adopt this. Do you know a lot about it, Jeff, but yes?
Well, since we have a land use expert.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone that ever said it's easy, just ask them. But, you know, in theory, does the DLCD staff and field rep, are they all for it?
But the land use plan, I mean, we have to adopt it ourselves before DLCD even gets involved, so I would, that'd be the first process. But I don't think, there's, why would there be an objection to DLCD on this? I mean, I just really won't. Now, we went ahead and we have our urban growth boundaries set up differently now, but we would change the boundaries on that one urban growth boundary, so.
See, common sense has very little...
I understand. But I think, but if we don't take the first step with the county and ourselves, then we can sit here and analyze what DLCD's gonna do or not, but I think if we both agree, I think there's probably a likelihood it will be adopted.
Very good. I agree.
Okay.
Frankly, the new director of DLCD is a lot more open.
And they were down here, wasn't he?
She.
She, I apologize.
Yeah, the transition team was down here. I asked them about urban growth boundaries and loosening them up, and they indicated that was one of the things that the new governor was interested in. One of the problems we may have, though, is what we saw with the recent two executive orders around homelessness, she did give leniency to state lands and money, but only for the metro areas, and she left out rural.
Exactly.
So hopefully, she'll give the same leniency around urban growth boundaries to rural that she does metro, but we also have an example in Portland, I believe, they have through Portland Metro a separate UGB option that's 50 years instead of 20, right?
Exactly.
So, and that's because they're a metro district, correct?
It actually applies to all the large urban growth boundaries around the state.
So if we could find a way to worm our way in to be considered a metro with all the other areas, I don't know, but...
Yeah, but I'm not, but so, so we need to understand, Jim, we, our situation here is different than anything else in the state. We have an urban growth boundary in Booker Hill, one in Inglewood, we have ours, Northman has theirs. It's limited, because when they set it up, none of us were agreeing, and I was not involved, believe me, I wasn't on this long ago, but they were, so they, the only way to meet the criteria under the rules and regulations of DLCD was that each entity had their own urban growth boundary. At this time, I think that has relaxed a little bit and we can change it, so we're just changing the format at urban growth boundary.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, I think it written into the weeds here, but the housing needs analysis applies only to CUS Bay or to Regent?
No, only to CUS Bay.
Yeah.
And they determined we have enough land by quite a bit. I tried to get the...
Yeah, but you know, we don't, well...
...land, I was not successful.
Yeah, but as you know, Jim, we don't have to adopt that housing needs analysis, we can accept it under resolution, which changes the situation, and that was a recommendation from the Planning Commission, so it doesn't tie us down to specifics in saying that we do.
Yeah, absolutely. We don't want to fall over on that.
Right.
Okay. Well, it sounds like someone's gonna take a little time, and I heard you had a lot of your staff on it probably, and then you'll have it, but you...
Well, you know, I mean, I think we need to take that first step and then we can get an idea. I mean, if the county doesn't accept the land use plan change, then, then we're stuck, I guess.
So I think staff can get you the proper terminology, I think, that we need for that as a goal.
Please. Staff, you have enough time to be working on this?
We spent a lot of time on it, so. It's being worked on.
Okay.
We've got words.
All right. All right, Empire Real District, gotta take a look at that one, it says accomplished. That's when we can take off. The next one, the Urban Real District Loan Program, no progress to date.
Well, this one's gonna be a capacity, finance capacity issue. So for using, in order to have a loan program, we have to have set aside money that we can loan from, but if we're currently dedicating our dollars to building improvement grants, implementing either street projects and/or front street projects, you just don't have the capacity. And then secondly, we'd have to set up, and my suggestion would be a partnership with an organization like CCD, who actually manages loans, but can't get there if we don't have the money set aside. So if you wanna do a loan program, we have to change how we're doing business now.
I think we should take this off. I think giving an improvement grant is much more helpful to businesses and entities than having a loan program set up. That's my take.
I agree.
Agreed.
So you wanna make, change it?
Take it off.
Take it off.
Just remove it.
Just take it off?
I would.
Because the other thing's already implemented and is working.
Design standards in all four, all replaced, Empire?
That needs to stay on there, 'cause I think we're just now getting started, aren't we?
Correct.
No master plan.
Yeah, and I think you would, my suggestion is just change that to the wording we're using in the RFQ. We're not calling it a master plan, we're calling it an action plan similar to...
Correct.
...what we did for Front Street.
Yep, you're right.
Very good. All right, that's the last, we're gonna make it all on entry, so we missing anything? Any other ideas? All right, pretty ambitious. So let's see, we look at housing and homelessness. First one, it's there with the county, that's all accomplished, so we got one off?
Our part of that project is accomplished.
Yes.
This whole page looks up to be eliminated, that's true.
Have we gotten any upper floor development in Dunville County?
Yeah, I don't know if we've done that. Well, technically, let me tell you how I think you did that. One, you did encourage upper floor development in the Buggy Bank Building, and you provided gap financing to that building owner, but more widespread than that, you changed the facade project to a building improvement project so that funds could be used for improving upper floors to include funding fire life safety improvements, sprinkler systems, elevators. So you've expanded your, the ability to use those improvement program funds, which can aid in upper floor redevelopment.
Okay. As long as we keep it in mind, because you know, I think the, some areas downtown that can be developed for upper floors, you know, the American Building, you know, that, that facility, I think, that is above the Bay Appliance, I, you know, I'm not sure where the ownership is in that, but they had some problems with life safety issues, and I think maybe they need to be broached about, you know, maybe we could help them facilitate that, I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's all storage now.
It is storage, yeah. But then you also have, like, above Ann Marie Larson's place, she's got that all set up. I mean, it can be turned into, you know, some different things, so anyway, there's some availability for us if we want.
Any reason to not take these two items off?
Which two?
The last two on the page, because they both say accomplished, or is there rewording or...
Well, you just wanna reword the third one, because we don't have a homeless work group anymore.
Yeah, that kind of, that facilitated, emerged into the county operation, county plan.
We can. I, I think the overall goal is that we've still gotta work towards finding solutions to the homeless crisis.
Yes, something like that.
And that's, that's probably more something in that ballpark.
Could just replace homeless work group with House Bill 4123 work group. That's, that's the county's one now.
House Bill is a little bit hard to interpret, I think...
True.
We should call it, like...
I don't remember what we're calling the work group.
It's the, it's the coordinated, it's the, the Cus County Homeless, or Cus County Coordinated Homeless Work Group, or...
So, the, we're having advisory board and then a stakeholder board, which is still being...
So coalition would fit, since it's made up of...
I think if...
What we have here out there is pilots, so I don't know if...
Yeah, I think you, I think it need to be broader and really focus on the solutions or opportunities to address the homeless crisis, and then that could be a task all by itself.
Right.
True. Spark Home, Matt.
Sorry, that, that's a different goal. I'm curious if there's a place for us to intentionally talk about work with relocating the Nancy Deveraux Center.
So, you certainly could. You know, the Oregon Mayors Association has put a legislative request together to include in, in the realm of the homeless crisis, funding, operational funding to help, I guess, cover the city's impact costs to dealing with that. The other is a, a capital improvement request. The council allowed staff to put together a request, and we forwarded that over. We asked for $2.5 million, and the goal, or project, is to find property where the Deveraux Center could be and expand its services to provide emergency sheltering, transitional sheltering, in a place that would be appropriate.
Somewhat related there, I think Cus Health and Wellness owns the property to its right or a chunk of it, so there, there may be a spot directly next to Cus Health and Wellness that could be used as a new site. That would be pretty helpful, 'cause it would put them next to me as well for energy and all that stuff.
So I think we're exploring those options, and we've had early discussions with the director of the Deveraux Center. But time's gonna, we're waiting on the legislature now. Is that an acceptable request from the Oregon Mayors Association? Will it get funding?
What about increasing housing supply?
So... You certainly have that, and then I think a proper goal would be implementation of the MMT program.
Right, the tax...
The multi-unit property tax exemption program. On concept that, that, the council has supported the concept, and now we gotta walk through the process and do the implementation.
But there's potential, quite a bit of potential housing on the plan, I mean, just whether it can go through, like, I mean, the Cascade Farms area, that's 420 homes, and then we got two low-income housing developments, 50 homes each, those will both go through and, and be developed, and so, I mean, we, and we have some other ones, we're trying to encourage, Roger's talked to a developer that's done a sixplex, and he's talked to him about maybe doing some others, that we can encourage him through this tax incentive program, so I think that could help. I know it's worked in Florence. One of the fallbacks on this, I think, that can be is our interest rates are changing, and that can make it a little bit more difficult, but the tax incentive might offset that cost, but we'll see.
Would this be a spot to also add to encourage the state to allow us to surplus state lands for development, since they already authorized it for all the urban zones?
Do we, what state lines, would we, do we have state lands available in our area?
National Guard.
Well, that would be great, if they already turned us down once, but I mean, yeah, I would love to have that facility.
They just authorized surplusing of lands in all the metro areas, so it might be a good time to kick them and be pleasant.
So maybe the broader one is increasing the housing supply, maybe a subtopic is explore incentives or, and/or other options. Which could include the MMT program or what Cottage Grove does, they put, let's say, they put $50,000 in their budget, in their general fund budget, and they use those funds to help pay for the permits, city-related permits for low-income housing. It was used one year sparsely in the, in the last few years, but it's, it's an option to help incentivize, or looking at other programs such as state surplus lands. The reality, you've already looked at every available city-owned property you have...
Yep.
And you've found ways to get, I mean, to surplus the ones and incentivize some of those properties. The ones you have remaining are, they're not buildable.
No. There might be another portion to put in here as well, as one of the results of the housing needs analysis was that we're actually the shortest on middle-income value housing. We have a lot of low-value housing, and we have not enough high-value housing, but the HNA identified that a lack of middle income is putting pressure down because higher-income people are purchasing places that they could afford more than, and then low-income people have no stock to move into. So we also have to look at how to get middle-income housing developed.
Yeah, and I think some of those, like that, you know, that nineplex and sixplex we did out there, but also Cascade Farms would be right in the middle if we could get the housing, I mean, if they could get going, but I don't know. We, it's, I don't know how we incentivize them to go, you know, but... The other one, I mean, you know, this is where I talked about, you know, maybe we need to, you know, talk to the port and see what they're intending to do with that property over there. I think a development could go over there, but I'm not sure what their plans are.
Just specifically mention that one with the transition team?
Okay, well, I mean, it's something to think about, so...
And that actually, the port, they are designated by the governor, they're not actually local, they're not appointed by the local locality, they're appointed by the governor.
So that's, we're a state port, that's what ours is, so, so the question begs...
What we have is, the port owns 130 acres in the East Side District, and it's, it's been rezoned by them 20 some years ago, it's from industrial to residential, but it's been undeveloped, and they're... Yeah.
It's 200-plus acres of, not a damn thing.
Is that because they're looking to, I mean, have we figured out why, the why? Is it because they're, they're hoping to develop industrial properties, which is gonna require housing for those projects that they're doing?
No, I think what they're looking at, I'm not sure that the, the current administration or board agrees that residential is the best fit use for that property. If they're looking at possible development projects, including wind energy or terminal or other projects, that, that may be better utilized as industrial. I don't believe in our current HNA, the most up-to-date one, does not include that as our, as available land.
But I mean, okay, so going back in...
I was just thinking at one time, is that what they were thinking, and now their focus has changed?
Their focus has changed.
Well, it was industrial, they came before this council, asked us to change it to housing, we did, and now we're back again, need to think about it. And when we had a meeting with the port, John and Roger, myself, and I forget who else was there, I asked John specifically if they would, if they're not gonna use it for housing, would they take it and rezone it, let's go back to industrial, let's get it off the buildable lands. I know it might not impact us, but it's still hanging out there, so...
Okay. I'm gonna suggest, is there anything else on housing supply?
The only thing is, I'm just wondering if maybe the partnership with Neighbor Works Umquah isn't better suited to be in this category than in the first category? For the home repairs?
For the what?
The home, the grant for the home repairs?
Oh, so what we have, we just completed a CDBG grant that was used for, I think it was $500,000, used for persons that had low-income housing, and it fixed up those homes, and we're going after another one now, because even $500,000 was limited, and only, I think, 60 homes. So, but this is an opportunity, it fits with our, on the homeless portion, because we're trying to keep those houses usable, so to prevent those people from becoming homeless.
Have we already filed the application?
No, you just went through the initial step the other night.
I've got some data I can provide, it'll help. We, there's a large backlog at work for that same thing.
Yeah. No, we just took that initial step with the public hearing last week, or this week. Seems like last week.
Why don't we go grab lunch and we can be in 15 or 20 minutes, as soon as you're ready to get to work, and then we'll be done for the early afternoon. And then we'll be done for the early afternoon.
That's an easy one. You should have like a housing backlog and then what?
There was still conversation, a lot of that had to do with the sound system and technology, Sheriff and council meetings and other public meetings. So let's, first thing, look at that smartphone app. What's the story? From the right hand left. Ah, no, sorry. Roger, what about that smartphone app?
I can't remember who brought this.
As we were doing upgrades to our website, we were looking to see if there was opportunity to incorporate some type of app. I know it's been a desire of Stephanie's to have an easy app where a citizen could say, "I got a pothole on my street," and be able to report it. And of course, there are technologies out there that will actually provide us a location on a map. I think someone, we were looking at interactive, although it's easier to do the app than it is the interactive part, because that takes resources to be able to respond back. And you also have to set expectations. Well, just because you reported it, everything is going to get fixed, because there may not be the resources to do that. But I think we've come a long ways, at least getting the website, and there's plans to enhance that, so there may be.
And I think probably it doesn't necessarily have to be an app as much as it needs to be somewhere. The reason that I like communication as a goal is because it takes the wind out of the common phrase that you didn't tell us something. And so, and also websites are designed for the, should be designed for the end user, which is not the staff or the council. End user is the citizen, so we need to make it as accessible and as easy as it can be for them to communicate with us. And most of the things that they want to communicate about are things that are broken or need to be fixed.
What did we just add, a smartphone app or enhance the website?
Well, yeah, I think it is in the website on there.
I guess I just share Roger's concern about the response, the responding piece of that. Like, is that feasible?
It'll all depend, and I'd make it more general, though. Some type of explore options for citizen reporting of issues, or, and I hate to put it that way, but.
Isn't that the point of council meetings, though, too? Public comment?
It is, but I think what we're finding with the, how technology's being used, I mean, I'm always at a loss and I'm dumbfounded when I see something on Facebook. Is the fire department open today? And then it's, and I want to write back, and I don't. Did you call them? And the reality is, people could report that they got a pothole in their street, they could call us, but they don't do it that way. Our world is changing, how they communicate, and instead of being, for me, being sarcastic and saying, "Why don't you do the obvious?" Maybe we need to figure out, how could they communicate with us? Instead of putting it on Facebook, how could they do something to just report it on an Just trying to figure out how best to, do we fit into the world and let our citizens tell us?
What about, like, what I was suggesting, a drop-down menu? So that if it's an option with the website, to direct it to a department, which would then assist with that, is it feasible? Because you're not, it's not just one person that's trying to cipher through the information. It's the department.
So our, I would just add that our website does have that ability, and we just need to get it built, but there is a, and we also talked about our team for website, we talked about the right phrasing, because the company we worked with, they use complaint, and we didn't want to use that terminology, but that's what they call that, is their complaint option on the website, and so it's there, we need to build it out, and then we need to decide what we want to label that. And it's a, it's a hot button on the front, you know, when you first go to the page, so you get right there. They can do that from their mobile, it's meant to work mobile as well, so, but we do have the challenge when it comes in, you know, that it gets into the people it needs to get to.
So we'll leave this on in some form, but I think Roger's ideas make it more objective-focused instead of a solution-focused. Got it. Website's been updated, what happened with that?
Been updated, it's still being worked on. So we do have some accessibility issues, because we just brought over, like, for example, PDFs that were scanned without searchable ability, so we have some work in seven days.
Yeah, that's what I'd like, I'd like to see the searchability improved, because right now, it's almost impossible to find anything.
Well, we have a great answer for you, then, because we're bringing on a new staff member, and we've split duties on what was one position to two positions. Part of it with the goal of digitizing more of the paper files, but to making them searchable so they can go on and be found by the public.
Any reason to leave that on the list? Just doing the final refinement, I would suggest. Agree to use the social media? Nice newsletter, I agree to every.
There's one thing, there's one thing I do, sorry, probably this isn't the forum, but sometimes, like, it'll, let's say Lucinda de novo, in the A, in Lucinda, it ends up being, it's, what, what did you say?
Wonky.
Wonky, wonky will work. It's not, it becomes like another character, and I notice that every week. I don't know if anyone else notices it, but I get it when I'm reading the update, so. Maybe it's just unique to me, but I would like to think that's not the case, and others might be experiencing that.
Maybe it's based on whether or not whatever device has the right font sets that your, that the newsletter revision is.
Right.
That might, we can ask.
Yeah, maybe just streamlining those fonts so that they're standard. Thank you.
Okay, good with that? You have the final one distribution list for the, for the update? Sounds like that's more than triple. That's good.
Backup, with the live streaming of public meetings, that's a separate issue, really, isn't it?
It is.
Okay.
I'm assuming we'll go through this, and then we'll go back and add some, yep.
Anything else on the Saturday right now, then we'll go back and talk about the live streaming technology. Anybody want to bring it up and talk about it?
I mean, it's probably one of those in progress, right? But we just have some citizens that are being challenged by sound.
I mean, I believe you will be getting equipment in in February, they're going to be coming in to install. There are some pieces that are expected to be delayed a few months, but, you know, so hopefully that end year, fiscal year, those pieces will be here in a long while, but I do expect February, March, we should see some differences in sound.
John, I didn't know, is this when you want the idea? Because I'm willing to bring it up now, or are we?
Me too.
Okay, so I think, yes, we're making some strides for the sound system, and I, I would like us, again, I'm always proud of how we lead typically, and I think this is not an area where we're leading quite yet, and so I believe that we need to not only install a new sound system, but we need to get more cameras so that they're closer in. I know Joe has mentioned many times, if you go onto Portland City Council, there are cameras that are really close, so you can see the faces. I do not like the meetings platform. I think for the get, for the person who is online, we look unprofessional, you're watching all the clicks, and I believe that we need to go to Zoom. And I know we've been talking about this for quite some time, and I think we just need to do it, and I'd like to see it done in Q1 of this year.
Is there a reason we have it?
I mean, mostly just because we already have the Microsoft package, so.
Some of the, some of the state entities have stuck with Teams for security reasons. I don't know if that's a factor for us, but.
With COVID, Zoom increased their security significantly.
Yeah.
Because so many, so many were having to go to.
Like DHS stuck with Zoom for security reasons.
I know for the groups I serve with, if it's within the confines of the organization, they use Teams, because that's security, and when they go public, it's Zoom.
Oh, yeah.
Since this gets into a thoroughly finite detail, do you want us to go on as a goal, just assume it's being looked at, or actually bring it back to the upcoming council meeting and talk about it?
Well, it can be, I don't know how we want to accomplish it. The thing is, is I think that we're driving to have more involvement with the public, and besides having them actually show up, which is not as common, but we also, so another way to reach them is through virtual interaction, and to do that, I think it's got to be as friendly and user-friendly as possible. So Zoom people are familiar with, Teams they are not, that's another aspect. I just don't think it's user-friendly, and it doesn't seem to be as reactive and interactive as much as Zoom can be. So that would be my reason for it. If there's something better than Zoom out there, or Teams, I would, that would be great, but I don't know of anything else at this time. And so, if we're moving in that direction, which I think we're going to advocate, I think at some point, more virtual input, at least try, and talk about community engagement, then this would be, we want to do whatever we can to make it the best. The other thing, if you're on, well, Rob, most of us have been virtual. He cannot see who's talking at the podium either. It's so, all I see is the council, I don't see who's interacting as a speaker in testifying, so, anyway.
I think you do now, because you get the same view that you get right now.
Which is perfect, because I'm right behind wood, no one can see my face.
All you see is the shiny spot.
So anyway, I don't know what context you want to put that in, as a goal, or something of working relationship, I don't know.
I just want it done in Q1. That's where I'm at with it. I feel like we've been patient, and we've been polite, and.
Well, it's a council decision, you know.
Yep. I can bring it to a council meeting, and we can have this discussion, and we can make it a goal, I'm just trying to make sure it gets addressed.
Yeah, I just don't know that it'll be realistic for Q1. If you're working on your sound system, that's going to be your first, I mean, it's already in progress, you could certainly amend, I mean, work with the contractor to do the cameras, and then I'm hearing consensus that you want to go to Zoom. So that could be improved, which are done. I think what you're looking for is to improve the way you communicate with the public through virtual meeting access. And right now, you're pretty much talking about the council meeting, but that really should be expanded to that all of the meetings that we do, so that we're in compliance with state law. That should include the tree board, the planning commission, the parks commission, and I'm sure there's another one, but.
So, I totally agree, Roger. I know there's some steps to this. There's some steps involved, but first of all, I think changing to Zoom can be done tomorrow. The sound system and all the cameras and everything else could be the next steps down the road, but Zoom, I think is pretty easy to switch, I mean, in my opinion.
Right, and what I'm trying to, what I heard was Q1 for all of these things, and if that's the only thing you want us to focus on, we can certainly get that done.
I think we can do it in stages, I don't, this is me.
Yeah, it's all right, I hear you, Roger. So I think a goal, a reasonable goal is, it would be nice to keep it on here, because it's really, it's communicating right to the public, and I think we take steps. Nicole's done a great job of updating us on the fact that the equipment's going to take some time to get here for the sound system, right? And so the cameras, I think, are the next thing, and we haven't even talked about those, so obviously there's going to be some wait time on getting those and figuring out which cameras to use. I just think it's where we're at now. I mean, Councilor Matthews is pretty much always virtual now, and so for him to be able to engage, right, in the meetings, I think it's important that we really focus on this, and, you know, I have moments of being impatient, and this is one of them, so I'm like, "Q1, get it done."
And I, in all, in fairness, I know that we've had some issues with the technology aspects and people that we've been working with, and that's been somewhat of a problem in dealing with that. But I think the Zoom is an easy way to switch, and then do these steps, you know, whatever else is necessary, and whatever else we can enhance, and I think it would be an ongoing goal to make it better as we can. I mean, if that's, maybe that's where I want to go, but that doesn't mean everyone else wants to go there, so this is my suggestion, but it doesn't mean it's everyone's, so, anyway.
I do just want to say I really appreciate how the city livestreams them on YouTube. That doesn't happen everywhere, you have to wait for someone to upload it, and so it's, I really appreciate that option for people.
And immediate.
Immediate, it's not, yeah.
Well, and the way our community gets their news has certainly changed, we can see that. can see that with the demise of the paper. Um, and in fact, I learned late last, uh, late this week, uh, that, uh, the public broadcasting channel, uh, is going to close at the end of, uh, June.
Wow.
Uh, but it's because it's different now. And tonight, um, more organizations are live streaming and the reality is to be in compliance with Oregon law, they have to. They have to allow people to participate, but this is a great tool. Not everybody will show up to a council meeting, but it's amazing how many people will watch it online.
Well, and that's measurable too. When you post it to YouTube, you can get measurable results for who is looking best.
Okay, we'll create another task relating to live streaming process for council meeting. Great. Anything else under communication? All right, let's turn to parks. Still just the Mingus Park Cool Tank. Take that one off. Okay, let's talk about the others. Mingus did fill out a couple counts, people mentioned it. Roger, you talked about what's on hold, why, what happened now?
Yeah, there's certainly a lot of projects that need to be undertaken, um, at Mingus. Projects in other parts of the parks too, but, um, we need to do something about dredging that pond. It's silting in and it won't, we probably only have, um, a short period of time left before we won't have a lake. Uh, but that's a major endeavor, probably a million dollars at, at best, uh, to do that. But there's other areas of the park that we need to raise. Uh, the children's area, uh, which is tech, today underwater, uh, and can't be used. Uh, so improved drainage and there's opportunities to create amenities like a fishing pier. Uh, and to be honest, that was considered because there's a possible funding source to dredge the pond if we include the fishing pier. Uh, but that's where we need to take the next steps. Where we are at now is we don't have match money if we go out and get a grant. And two, we don't have, uh, staff capacity to go out and write those grants. So, um, my suggestion, uh, is to create capacity on both. One, by dedicating dollars, uh, in the upcoming year's budget to hire grant writers. And two, uh, uh, council president had suggested maybe we start putting aside a small amount of money in the budget every year that's dedicated for match. And if we don't use it that year, it rolls over to the next year and is built upon, similar to what we're doing with, um, putting money aside for the next fire truck. Uh, so that's, that's my suggestion and it was, uh, presented before the Parks Commission, uh, this week.
Okay. Record on that. All right, 100 block of Fulton Avenue.
I truthfully don't believe that we should add any more parks on until we take on what we have and, uh, and, you know, take care of what we have already, which is going to be quite a project, you know, itself. Mingus Park, John Toppets and some others. So I would say we, I'd take, I would like to take it off. I mean, if you want to leave it on for consideration down the road, maybe, but.
I thought we, in the master, uh, parks, master plan, that's exactly what, uh, we said, that we weren't going to take on any new, um, parks. So it was just going to be the existing parks that we had.
You're correct.
Just to throw this out though, when we, um, cited the wastewater treatment too across the street, part of the support for that was that we would turn that back to a natural area.
It is somewhat a complicated issue because we still have infrastructure, uh, in the ground over there. Not only the remnants of the old treatment plant, but some active, um, infrastructure that's tied to the new treatment plant. And one of your projects yet to be disclosed is we're going to have to replace the outfall, uh, which runs right through that property.
Yeah.
So, uh, I think you did, as a council, make a decision not to undertake any new, uh, or list any new parks projects, additional parks, I guess I should say, uh, in the parks master plan. So my, my suggestion would be to remove this out of there. If opportunities come up in the future, nothing prevents you from revisiting the topic.
Right, Roger, was, sorry, go ahead, Joe.
We could make some kind of statement along what we talked about earlier. If, if there is a partner entity that would like to take on the responsibility, we could look at being a part of that. So if something like Pirate Park, if the high school wanted to do another project like that, or if you had someone like Friends of Mingus Park that was a little more developed and they wanted to make something, but so that we could provide the recreational immunity aspect, I would imagine. But other than that, I would say no to anymore.
And then my question was, can we make sure that we're still maintaining that area? Because that is a, um, an access point for clamming. Um, and, um, to that point, maybe we reach out to the tribes to see if they might want to.
Yeah.
Help us, um, maybe it's not a park, but facilitate some park benches or something or, uh, because I know that there's a lot of gathering that happens from that location.
It's a traditional harvest ground, isn't it?
Yeah, and I'd forgotten that when we had originally done that, cause that's going way back to our initial.
Our first decision.
We didn't know that there was going to be infrastructure left under there and I'd forgotten about that. And that came after.
Right.
Well into the rebuild, the build of the new. But that's a great idea.
All three of those last items on the schedule. That leads you only one park project, which is Mingus Park, which is on hold. Cover it all? All right, Roger, I've got time to do four more projects. About public safety. What's happening for reserve officers in this department?
Well, it looks like the, the police is moving forward, but, uh, we haven't got too much traction, uh, Mark, with the firefight volunteers?
Not really. Volunteerism across the country is a, a dying art.
Okay.
I wouldn't say we're not making progress. Um, we're doing what we can with our limited means.
Sure.
I'm sorry for my question. Um, I should know this, but what is, what technically is a reserve officer?
Are you talking police officer? So a reserve officer, they actually go through a reserve academy. They get some law enforcement, uh, uh, training, um, in the area of criminal law. And then when they come back, uh, to, uh, the agency, we train them on, uh, hands-on practical stuff and, and they're actually sworn in, uh, they're in uniform. And then we have an actual policy that they have to work through, um, in, in terms of steps and to, to actually achieve like solo status. But initially when they come through, they're working alongside, um, a police officer, usually a coach. And so what we've used the program and it's been very beneficial for our department is, um, we use it for training grounds, um, and for the ability to train that person and then potentially move them over into a full-time position. I can say that's where I started. I think Roger started as a reserve. A lot of us got our starts there. And it's a huge opportunity for us and I'm sure the fire department can attest to this too. It's a huge opportunity for us to not only, um, train them, give them a little experience, but also kind of get to know them and see what their ability is and, and is this job truly for them? Instead of investing a lot of time in and then they realize first year and do it, they're like, this is not what I thought it was. And I don't want to be in it, so.
Thank you.
For a reserve police officer, do they do the full 12 weeks for patrol or do they do in a, a shrunk one?
So they go through at a reserve academy and, um, that used to pair up, it's kind of a little bit different now, but it's still the same, same principle. Pair it up with two terms at the college, uh, fall term and then a winter term. So they get that, that's their, um, book portion of the process. And then when they come back to the agency, we're generally running them through the full FTO process that we do a, uh, full-time police officer, which is the field training.
So they don't go to the academy?
They do not go to the academy. Um, however, they are given a DPSST number and we do log their, their training, which again helps when they become a full-time police officer, if that's their, their, you know, goal.
Cool.
Well, and, and Mark, I think it's changed for the fire department, hasn't it? Because you know, have people like my dad and his friends that just did it because they enjoyed it. You get volunteers that are actually looking to get a paid job, right?
Yeah, most of our volunteers are ones that are looking for a career in the fire service. Because there's such a commitment, um, to training and standards, um, it's, there are a lot of regulations. So it used to be a, a social club, um, like when your dad was a volunteer. Um, not that he wasn't very active and, and he was very, um, very well-trained, um, but that is what's really dying away is because there's so much requirement and it's, it's less of a social club anymore. Now it's, it's, uh, being heavily regulated. Uh, and so almost all of our volunteers are ones that are pursuing a career in the fire service. So we bring a lot of people in, uh, and Nicole can attest that, that we turn in a whole lot of new applications, but we also have people that leave and almost all of them are leaving to go accept a position somewhere.
So one goal, are we still on public safety here?
Yes.
One goal I'd like to see is the, uh, fire inspection program, implementing that in the next couple of years.
Fire inspection program.
I think Mark can talk to it better than I can.
So, uh, several weeks ago, we proposed to city council at a work session, um, that we, uh, implement a fire inspection program so we can, um, ensure that our businesses are, uh, safe for not only, uh, our community, but also that they're following the standards, the, the, the fire code. Um, it's a public safety issue, certainly, um, but it's not something we have the funding for right now. So, uh, we offered some suggestions on how we might be able to, um, put a user cost to that, whether it's through a, an inspection fee or increased business license fee or a combination thereof.
And Roger, you suggesting including that as an overlay task?
Yes. I don't know if the rest of the council agrees with that, but I, I think it's a need that we have in the community.
Let's, uh, check with the rest of the council, what do you think?
I'll support it.
Have you seen head nods, thumbs up?
When I was at Bay Area Enterprises, we were required to have an inspection periodically and it was very helpful to have the fire department come through.
Does that mean just for businesses or multifamily also?
Primarily businesses. Multifamily, uh, we run into the difficulty of we can't inspect inside, uh, residents. Uh, and so you can inspect the, or inspect the, uh, the public areas, like a, a shared laundry facility or those kinds of things.
How does it work?
Um, it's still worth it to make sure that they're addressed correctly, that their, um, their public spaces are, are safe, but you can't go inside. I'm sorry, what?
That's not what you're suggesting at this time?
Uh, it would be included.
It would be?
Yeah.
Cause that's a business.
It is.
Okay.
I think it, it also, um, puts a fa, a face in a, in a different situation with the public so that it, you know, they're always working, but it actually is something other than just a situation where you call because you need a help. You, you need emergency assistance. And I think that that's important is that people see us for other, other things just, uh, rather than just looking at a myopic view.
Proact events that are reactive.
Yes.
Okay, last page. The most, the goal, twelve hundred and most, two states have two weeks ready for the best.
Sorry, on public safety still, I see in the notes, um, from staff that, um, there was a goal around working with our county criminal justice partners to revitalize our local crime justice system that is functional and holds our offenders accountable.
Yeah, so, um, that, that's ongoing. Um, what I was really referring to in that was, um, uh, obviously everybody knows right now that our, our jail is, um, is not fully functioning and which has, um, a degree of impact on the entire criminal justice system. So what we have, uh, started doing already is, uh, working with, uh, our new sheriff, uh, the chiefs and, um, the admin staffs from multiple agencies and seeing what we can do to partner up, um, with the county and help facilitate that reopening of the, the jail and also working with the DA's office to see how we can, um, help maybe streamline cases that, uh, are needing to be streamlined so where we can, um, kind of move things through the system a little bit easier. And so that's ongoing. I anticipate that to be ongoing for, uh, for, you know, quite some time until we're, uh, back up to full capacity. But, uh, yeah, that's, that's something that we're, we've already started.
Is that something to add as a, your objective?
Seems really important, but I'm, I'm not, I mean, it seems really important.
What's going on with SINT these days?
So SINT is, um, obviously managed under the sheriff's office and just with their resources, staffing levels right, right now, um, they do not currently have an assigned detective. Uh, I know that that, just speaking with the sheriff just recently, I know that is something that he is, um, hoping to, to reinstate and get going again.
I thought the Kukua Indian tribe just gave funding to SINT. Is that, do you know anything about that chief through their?
Um, I don't know. I know in the past they've helped fund some of their vehicles. I don't know what funding's they provided.
I think it was through their, um, community fund, so I'll double check that though. Sorry, Joe, go ahead.
Oh, that's okay. I was going to ask if you thought there was any role we could, uh, put on the goals to support SINT. I know at a time we provided an officer to it, but if there's nobody running it, that would be a little superfluous.
Yeah. At, at this time, I think SINT is, uh, I, I, again, I think it's a goal of the sheriff, but I, I don't think he's there right now, um, and as, as far as his staffing levels and his ability to get set up and running again.
Okay.
I was going to say, I, I've seen a lot more communication in the last five days from the sheriff off, sheriff's office than I've seen in a year. So I think, I think, um.
Dave was awesome.
We can address it as a goal, but I think it's, I think those are finally working together, which is, I don't know if you feel that, a better working relationship?
Absolutely. And I feel, I mean, I think we can all say there's already been some forward progress. Um, we met, uh, a week or so ago and, um, kind of figured out a, a way to, uh, at least transport some of the offenders that needed to, uh, go to the jail. And we've worked out a system and that's been working fairly well. And as, you know, the sheriff, uh, indicated in his most recent post, how many, uh, how many, um, folks they've actually been able to run through their booking process. And so I think it's a, a work in progress. Um, our communication is definitely, um, improving and it's that partnership that we just need to strengthen and, and continue to work together.
Chief and Roger, uh, educate me if you need, uh, to. I remember in 2016 when we were talking about a, um, homelessness committee, uh, I challenged this council, if not us, then who? And so I think there were others who thought we should have, um, a committee to address homelessness in our area. Forgive my ignorance, but is this another one of those instances? Um, we are the largest city on the Oregon coast and if the county doesn't have the capability to do it, um, why wouldn't we consider it? I mean, drugs are prevalent here, we know that. Um, and, um, why wouldn't we at least, and maybe we have, so forgive me, go down the road to, to see what it would look like financially for us to be the lead in that space?
Well, I, I think we could be the lead. Um, now the county was, um, using funds to actually run that, um, through some of the forfeiture. We don't have any, we don't have access to those forfeiture funds. Um, you are challenged right now with having the same staffing level that you had in the eighties. And that's just a limitation of tax dollars. Even though your city has grown and your demand on, uh, and I guess I should say not demand on, but the number of calls that you're required to go to now, which were discretionary in the, in the eighties are no longer discretionary, as they shouldn't be.
Right.
Domestic violence, um, and those type of things. I think if you were to add one more thing, I, I think you'd be challenged financially. I think if you were to add one more thing, I, I think you'd be challenged financially, not, not only to fund it, but to staff it right now.
And I hear you. And I don't, I guess I'm just, maybe it's not a goal for today, but I think it's something maybe we should consider because again, I always am proud of the work that this council does because we typically lead. And so if we're the agency that leads, and sorry Roger, you do a great job of finding money anytime we need it. And so I can't imagine that we're not gonna find
I just got set up there.
Money to fund a couple more officers. I understand we need to be very thoughtful about it and make sure that it's a constant funding source. But, but maybe it's not now or, actually I would like to see something, just like maybe a consideration. And you can do it at the end of 2025. So at least we, you know, looked into it.
You certainly, this council was the council that was leading in this because at one point in time, you were the only funder.
Right.
And then we stopped funding because no one else would put dollars in.
I just think that maybe the tribes would step up. I know that they have in the past. And so if there was some stability to the program, and you know it much better than I do. So I could be totally off base, but I feel like if there were stability to the program and it was being run by this city, I think there would be a lot of confidence for people to fund it.
And you might, you might get some partnership with North Bend. I understand their person who's soon to be the chief, used to be one of the SINT directors.
Yeah, anyway, just something.
I'm probably taking us down a rabbit hole. Is it statutory that we cannot receive the proceeds from forfeitures? Is it a transferable right from the county?
Well, forfeitures have become very complicated.
Yeah, it's like 30 days and a bunch of other stuff.
No.
It's after conviction.
Oh shit, okay.
And then the money has to be doled out by statute to certain areas. And so there's a, a limited amount. There, it takes a lot of work from an attorney's side to work through the process and the courts. So it is a, it is a difficult process.
I remember it got more complicated a few years ago.
And rightfully, some of it rightfully so because of the sins of the past.
Yep.
Okay, I heard two things come up. Sarah, you had an item, you two were just adding to this list about 10 minutes ago.
It was from the chief's list that we got, working with our county criminal justice partners to revitalize our local crime, criminal justice system that is functional and holds our offenders accountable. And I mean, I know that social media is not the best place to get our full citizen, you know, attend what they're focused on. But it does seem to be a very large focus of citizens if we were to look at social media. Oftentimes can't actually go on there.
I like to say it's uninhibited, which means that that's probably a larger focus from people that you don't hear from.
Right.
I, I think social media tells us a lot.
Yeah, and it's, I mean, it's just very blamey, fills up every feed, it seems like. I like the, I like your language that you, that you've used. I'm not sure it's totally actionable, but I, I think it gives direction that we want you to continue to explore that.
Okay. Now, all of this is gonna come back to you, so plenty of opportunity to work with Smith and add and delete subsequent meeting. And Cindy, what?
I'm just a Pollyanna. I don't know if it's, I mean, really, I don't know if it's, it's, if it's feasible.
You wanna, you wanna continue the focus on, on, on eradicating drug, basically.
Yeah, and I just think since the avenue to do it, but I, yeah, I, I hear what Roger and.
It leads to a lot of the things that is your focus, or well, all of our, everyone's focus.
Citizen focus, yeah.
So does that not fit in with the, can that, those two not be married together?
That means I can ask you about it in six months, is that what you're saying?
You can ask me anything, anytime.
But prior to that, Roger, she said 2025, at the end of 2025.
You got a wide window.
Thanks for listening, Jeff.
You can certainly ask me in, it's 2005, 2025.
2005.
That's the, we've gotten down to number nine, gone through that. We added to the list, city manager.
I think we missed becoming two weeks ready in preparation for disaster.
Oh, sure, you were prepared for that.
Again, going back to the staff notes, there was a note about, I'm not finding it right now, about the city council being trained at some level in preparation, disaster preparation. Listen, I don't like that.
No, no, I haven't done my training is what that was.
I have not either, and so I thought.
I lost the yellow piece of paper.
Rob is the only one.
Rob gets to ride in the fire truck.
No, I haven't got that opportunity yet.
I found it.
Now it's green.
He somehow knew.
Changed color so he knows what year he gave it to.
I, I certainly believe.
I started.
I certainly believe in the region that we live within that a, a goal for disaster preparedness has to stay on the council goals. And it has to be a continual focus. It is, some of the, the decisions that you make regarding facilities, as you talked about earlier, hinge on where do they go? It depends on location because of our, where we live. So the chief and his staff has done a great job in getting grants and we have a number of Connex cages out there that have supplies. And I think that should continue to be worked on, to increase those and to provide the training that he does. The reality with PEG broadcasting going out, you have the Edlin building, is that another opportunity for another storage spot? It's just something that we'll have to continue doing. If, if we don't do disaster preparedness, who will?
On the list, if I remember right, the council's rally point is the fire station to make emergency declarations and all that. Shouldn't we have a box there as well as a rally point?
At?
The fire station downtown?
That is your emergency operations center.
So we don't need a box? Cause essentially it's, everything's already there. Is that what you're saying, Roger?
It's there, but you know, as your disaster preparedness, I know that the reality is we're gonna need to do, cause you like getting together and talking together. We need to do a tabletop exercise and walk through it so that you're not having to do just-in-time training the day of an event.
Exactly.
Is that a task?
Yeah, that does seem like a task.
You're gonna do a drill.
You're gonna make us get this done, chief. I like it.
We gotta hoof it too, cause the roads will be out, right?
It's gonna be a long walk for you, Mr. Mayor.
We need a helicopter here. Right, chief? Traffic control, all kinds of stuff.
All of the chiefs need a helicopter.
Before we get out of here.
Do a tip-up exercise task. Anything else? Goal nine, goal ten. Okay, let's talk about what you like to put on this, having to do with city manager transformation.
Roger, you've done this, you should.
So I just think that, first of all, I, I wanna make sure there's buy-in from the council on the process and procedures we're going in the direction. And I think we just need to have that conversation. I'm not sure how often or when. I think we take some direction from Roger and Nicole on this. But you know, it's just been talked about in general, if I'm, if I'm correct. There's not been specifics. Okay, so you know, we're gonna have a, you know, a certain period of time. We're gonna need to have a transformation to a new city manager and an assistant and those things need to be thought about. So I don't know if we start in six months, this process, or keep it going, or talking about it, or collaborating about it. But it needs to be where this council agrees, this is the direction we're gonna go. And these are the people that we want to take us that way.
I think six months would be too late. I think quite honestly, if we're talking about two years, we need to start that process now. So I think we task Roger to go back and bring a plan forth, forward to us for our consideration. And then talk about, you know, maybe there's a couple alternatives, Plan A, Plan B, Plan C to consider. But I think if we wait six months, and even though Roger has said that he would love to still work for this city and we want Nicole to, to move into that role, I think, I think we owe it to the citizens of this community to make sure that it's, it's a formalized process and we've been thoughtful and, and all that fun stuff.
Any injection to that, add in it?
Oh, me? Not for me, but, so what do you, Nicole think about it? Roger?
Well, I think, for me, I think it would be helpful to formalize.
Okay.
And either accept what's been discussed or to provide direction. I agree that six months is not long enough to start the process because if you should determine to go a different route, you're probably 90 days at the, at the very earliest to come up with a process and to go through it and to vet somebody and bring somebody on. So I, I think the sooner the better. How best to do it? That's, that's still a question. Should you create a, a council committee to discuss and then make a recommendation to the rest of the council? That might be way so that some of this could happen behind closed doors.
Does that involve maybe some at-large citizen?
That's, that's a council decision, although the hiring of a city manager is the role of the council.
I, I think we should have, I think finalize it, finalizing a decision on how to move forward is the correct terminology. I think we can do this in a work session to begin with. And if the council has a direction different than what's been discussed, then we need, then we can go and take the next steps. But I don't know if we need.
I agree.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I just think, what I've been missing or not seeing is it hasn't been formalized. It's been just talked about. So I think it's, we're at the stage that we need to formalize this and see if the council's on board. And if they are, then we just keep moving forward in that direction, whatever that direction may be.
When I talk about Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, it's if the assistant city manager becomes a city manager. And if the existing city manager becomes the economic development person. And if you don't do that, then are we having another, you know, assistant city manager? I want that all dialed in before you get even close to retirement.
And then I get, you know, the other option is if that's not it, then going out for a new city manager process is another option. But you know, I mean, those are the, that's the process I see. I mean, and that's where I'm at, a taking, you know. Hopefully we can just finalize everything and the council agrees and then we move forward.
Yeah, before Roger gets to his third retirement, we need a plan.
And you know, I get it, time goes by really quick. And it wasn't that long ago that I went on a two or three-year contract.
How many years ago was that?
Well, we're down to 17 months left.
Right, so, yeah.
I do think we need to put a timeframe on this then. Because I mean, if we choose to go a different direction, we need to get started on that.
I think you, you need to make the decision within the next five months.
Okay, so that makes sense.
And if you did that, then you'd have one year.
Yeah, and then whatever we decide, that year will give us time to allocate this plan. So anyway, yeah.
I said not Q1, I was being facetious.
Well, I think by Q2.
Okay.
Very good. All right, we've gone through pretty extensive discussion of these items. Anything to come up with, any new ideas right now, anything you wanna bring out?
I just wanna, so we have that list of the things that you mentioned. So I just wanna make sure I'm understanding that I think most of the things we discussed were in there.
I'm dying to know about the shopping carts though.
So, so the thing is, is that what we've had, in one of our meetings that came up, the, maybe more than one meeting, talked about shopping carts being a theft of property. But if no one says there's a theft, then there's nothing to follow up on. But this is a tool that the homeless are using and it's creating a problem throughout the community. Roger, maybe just Roger and I had talked about, there's a, I thought it came with the council meeting. There's initiatives, and I think there's one up in the, in the Salem area, that they put locking devices on. So the grocery stores and stores have to put a locking device on their shopping carts that they cannot leave their property. And they lock up automatically. I know the, someone that manages the Walgreens up in the Salem area and they do it and it works very well. So the shopping cart does not leave the facility. The other reason is, is that we have shopping carts piling up at our city shops because we're picking them up and the stores are not coming and getting them. So then we are gonna have to dispose of them and it's a cost to us. And also it's a cost of manpower, which we are limited on, our public works. So this is the way, I know it's a cost to the stores, but it's also a cost to them to lose the carts. So I would, I'm thinking, and my thinking, and I don't know, it would probably be a wash, but it also would save us resources and also save them because the carts stay on property.
This was discussed extensively with the homeless work group and councillor De novo talked about us being the lead on this. And you know, Drew can attest, this, this was a discussion for quite a lengthy period of time. And our, our police and, oh my gosh, I'm just escaping me. Our, our departments have actually been working on this with the stores and, and yeah. It is, it's, it's a growing problem, amazingly.
I wonder if the bottle, the new bottle drop location will help at all?
Well, actually now we're seeing, I'm seeing, because I don't live very far from the bottle drop, now I'm seeing more grocery carts being left on Newmark. People are using the grocery carts to transport the cans and then they're leaving the grocery cart there in the, in the right of way. What we're finding though, and we wouldn't be the first community that looked at, how do we fix this problem? The reality is, I think staff has picked up in the last two and a half months, over a hundred carts. But picking up the carts is the right thing to do. They're being left on our streets, which is, it is the front yard of our, of our city. And if they, they get left there, some of them are ending up in the bay. So now it's ending up in our estuary or it's ending up in our lakes.
Train lane, travel lanes.
So I, I think maybe you could look at a goal to regulate shopping carts in the city and not, not decide here what type of regulation it is, but what are your regulation options?
Yep, I think we need to do that. I still would favor what I just explained or, because it works. But I think that should be something that comes forth and we talked about regulating it. Just give you a short story. A citizen decided to help facilitate this and cleaned up a slew area of shopping carts. Took them back to the facility they came from and the manager says, no, we don't want them.
Because they were dirty?
Yeah, but they're their property. So he, he being, he, he was a personal citizen, citizen. He unloaded the dump truck, said, well, his, not dump truck, his truck and said, well, these are yours, you need to take care of it.
They're also altering them to take off the identification. But it's that, that hundred carts that he spoke about, there is a group that is, AYA is assisting in picking up those. So it's more than what you, honestly, it's a lot more than you think when you just see one.
I think it's, he's given like 10 bucks a cart or something and it's a good incentive, yeah.
It was bizarre where they turn up to, I remember chief indicated that they end up at, or maybe it was officer Bab indicated they'd end up out the Elrod trails and such. I'm surprised locking wheels even help, they're towing them out the hill.
Yeah, so anyway, I think coming back to this with the regulation suggestion or format would be great.
I would maybe suggest we put that under, in the general area of the homeless section.
John, you asked if there was anything else and if I look at that yellow piece of paper, we have not talked.
Jeff, would you bring that up, please?
We did talk about goal tracking.
Mr.?
Yeah. They're hiding it from us.
Okay, so we are getting there. Sorry, I was like, hey, there's some stuff we didn't talk about, okay.
Anything else on the actual goal list?
Well, this to me falls under the goal list, right? So, okay, all right.
So the topic is how do you want to use these goals? Lot of different examples out there and I think many jurisdictions do a quarterly report that discovers. out there, and I think many jurisdictions do a quarterly report that just comes to you on a work session for discussion. Not unlike this, it's just an update. I was looking, pursuing the Salem council agenda recently, and it does what a lot of city council agendas do, is that every agenda item says, they call them focus areas, which focus areas does that agenda item relate to. The other ideas too, it might be just an ongoing live forum, you can do and look at some of that if you want.
I think we kind of...
The point I'm making is, I don't think you want to wait a year or two years before you get an update. I think if you're gonna be trying to be very strategic, that means you gotta have the temporary misinformation, be able to respond and pivot if you need to. So let's just have a discussion about that, what you'd like to see. Obviously, the more you want, the more time it's created is on the staff to, if you're mindful of that. What do you want to do with these things?
Well, I think we kind of do already, you'll know if it's one of our council goals in our staff report, but maybe quarterly or something, we just, you put it in the advanced agenda, and we just talk about our goal, or maybe at a work session, we just talk about our goals and where we are.
I think I've talked about this before, and I don't know if it's possible, I keep, maybe it's a pipe dream or something, or maybe I'm being Pollyanna. But anyway, if there was some way to track this, that could be on our desktop for the computer, that would work with the staff and us, where we could just see where they're at, and instead of getting, having to go through a lot of, you know, rigmarole to do this. Now, I'm not sure it's possible, but if you, you know, this would, because you staff, if I believe, understand correctly, Roger and Nicole, is that you have a meeting every so often, and you still, you have, where your guidelines are on what you've accomplished and what you're doing, am I right?
Well, there are various different staff meetings. We meet weekly.
Okay.
With the department heads.
Are the goals always addressed in there?
No.
Okay. So, maybe it goes, it would, this task list would do goals and other things, because what I notice is that I don't know where we're at on these, and doesn't mean that's bad or good, it's just, I don't know. And then if I ask a question, here's an example I'll use. So, I don't know, a year to two years ago, John Eck, I said, "Hey, there's some overhang on park." And I'm really cautious, because you know, that's a street I use, and I don't want to think I'm getting any favoritism. So I said to John, you know, I think this overhang, UPS trucks and FedEx trucks and everyone's hitting these things. And he said, "Okay, I'll tell Greg." He says, "Greg, I'll get back to you." Well, I never heard anything. And now, I'm not saying that's good or bad, just what it was. And then, two weeks ago, they're trimming them all up and cutting the trees down. So, when the citizen asks me, I says, "Well, I'm sure it's on their list," because I didn't know. But if that was somewhere where I could say, "Well, you know, it's on the list, and we're working down the goals, besides the goals, these tasks," because then, the other thing I think for the council, is that we don't, we realize what we encumber on you with all these comments with council meetings and whatever else, you know what I'm saying? Anyway, I don't, it might be a long process or difficult to do. But if we have some kind of task list that we could look on our desktop and pull it up and see where the thing's at, 50%, 20% not started, something like this maybe, and it doesn't have to be this in-depth, it just says percentages, you know, you know, goal setting, or what's underneath that, you know, better this, 50% not started, whatever, date, whatever, and stuff like that. Anyway, does that make sense?
It does, I'm just not sure how manageable that will be.
Okay.
Because there are hundreds and hundreds of tasks that are happening.
Correct.
With all the departments. I do like the quarterly reporting.
Okay.
That we could provide, and we could provide not only what's on your goals, but other things that naturally get added.
Sure. You know, and I mean, and it's like, I feel like sometimes I'll ask you about something, and you'll say, "I'll check into it," and I know you checked into it, and then I'll come to you and say, "Yeah, they're supposed to get back to me," and then you have to go find out again. You know, I mean, that's, it's a simplicity thing, but it wouldn't bother you so much, and I wouldn't have to keep saying, and I don't want to keep bothering you.
Well, maybe we don't do a good enough job. I know, like, I will, like, call Roger and go, "Hey, can you look into this?" And maybe it would be better for Roger and staff if we're actually asking those questions at a work session, or it's more formalized, so then you can get back with us, right, whenever, at the next council meeting. And, I mean, I like the idea of the quarterly report, I think that's reasonable for you. And then when we're talking about tasks, something that specifically was asked from this council, where you can respond back at a work session or a council meeting.
Are your notes that you give under your report, are those something that you type up?
No, but not that it couldn't be.
Well, I'm just wondering, because there's always a lot of good information in that, but I don't, I'm not, I'm always listening and not always writing stuff down.
Wouldn't that end up in our notes?
Yeah, it could be in our notes, it wouldn't even have to...
Yeah, it doesn't, yeah.
What's written down in here.
So, I mean, I don't know if this is an option, and staff can speak to this, but I know at least public works, you guys have tracking documents that you're watching kind of your tasks, we talk about in the division head meetings. Through Microsoft, we can create a SharePoint, where those could sit, you guys could have access, they don't have to be the live documents.
Right.
And we could put the goals in there, and they could also be another document that sits in there. And you'd be able to open those, it's gonna take some time on your part to go open and look for what you're trying to track, but that might be a beginning to see what might work or not work.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to make this cover send more difficult for you, this is, my intent is not to make it more work for you, I'd like to find a way to make it less work for you, and less involvement, and more interactive. So, I don't know if it's possible, but...
Well, I would imagine you and the council president will be looking at those, the rest of us will be waiting for our quarterly reports from the staff telling us.
Rob and I look at it at different degrees, I kind of go do a general overlook, and Rob does a detailed look.
Which is good.
Okay, so we've got, so we'll put together a goal along this line, okay. Before I ask the final question, which is, how do you want to, well, I'm gonna ask it, how do you want to manage adopting this? Roger, what's your next question?
Well, I think what we would, what we have done in the past, after we've had a goal-setting session, we put together a draft, sent it around through an email to get any feedback, and then we bring it back to a work session and/or a council meeting for review.
Yeah, I think the staff needs to review it and see if it's something they can accomplish in two years. I mean, and that's the important part. I mean, there's a lot that, as you've seen, they've done, and we are constantly adding to it, at council meetings, phone calls, and whatever else. So, I want to make sure that the staff is comfortable, and they don't feel burdened, that this might not be able to be the case, and be realistic with us, and let us know if they can or cannot.
That's very enlightened thinking.
Yeah, exactly.
John, there were still two items that were not addressed in goals, so I don't know, again, just staying on point. The boardwalk and our DEI resolution. So in terms of the boardwalk, I was hoping, I know we're starting to do work, and Roger and I had had this conversation over getting new flagpoles and some lights on the boardwalk, but that is, the boardwalk is in need of obviously some work. And so, Roger, you've got something you want to say I can tell?
Yeah, so staff actually is working on a, I don't want to call it a master plan, but...
An action plan?
It could be an action plan, but we're, they're identifying the capital need, improvement needs of that, and trying to schedule it out. I think we undertake that as simply as we're doing other projects like sidewalks, where we're setting aside a block of urban renewal dollars every year and undertaking a project. The boardwalk did not get in the condition it is in just a couple of years, it's taken years to get that way, and it'll take years to address it. It's the same as our streets. But we are looking at a identified project based on available resources and the degree of decay.
So, wouldn't that be good to have under our parks stuff, that's a, that's a task that's in progress?
Yes.
Because you want to see some succession on that, so isn't that something that we could include, and then it gets that...
Well, yeah, and I want the citizens to know, because that's one of the things I hear most about, is the boardwalk, so I want them to know, yes, we are working on a plan, and yes, here's where we are with it.
Yeah, like, for instance, we just did the bulkhead that you referenced, and because of that, that has sloped down, the sand had gone out, and, you know, that's why everything fell. And, but that's been repaired, and we're gonna be repairing all that, so.
So I think that could be simply said, to create and implement a boardwalk improvement plan.
Perfect.
And to set aside annual funding.
Perfect. And then in 2020, we passed a resolution to be more focused on work in the DEI space, diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I know that we do trainings, I think we've done one training, I don't know if that's ongoing, Roger. And so, I think, I just wanted to make sure that we don't lose sight of that. We said we were gonna do something, and so I'd like it to stay on a goal. I think we, we thought we were doing work in that space with the flag policy, and I still think there's work to do, and I would like us, I would like to ask the council if they would like to continue to find opportunities to celebrate the BIPOC community and marginalized community, or people in this community.
Can I offer that the, our region has a new regional health equity coalition, it's brand new to our region, it really helps to add FTE to the regional equity work, and that group is putting on a diversity summit on, I think it's the 13th and 14th at the Mill Casino.
Yeah.
I would, I'd love to see staff and council presidents with that.
I agree.
Could you send me a permission?
No, I think it should be a work, it's a resolution, but it should be more than a resolution, it should be ongoing involvement.
Travel Oregon just did a 10-year transfer, I should know this, a 10-year transformational plan, strategic plan, and it was making sure that, I mean, the state, the governor said we need to do work in DEI, and so I just feel like as a city, we need to do that as well, so.
I really like what the mayor said, and the mayor message after the flag policy.
Finding opportunities.
When that came to us, and I think your last line said something to the effect of, we will find other ways to celebrate diversity in our community, and so I think that's an important goal.
No, it is, and, you know, in fact, I just got a phone call, and it was from someone that was there at that meeting and made a testimony, and I wrote these two individuals, and said, "Let's get together and talk." I think we can do things just like that. They responded, and they said, "Yeah, I would love to sit down and talk," and asked them what they envisioned that we can do, because sometimes, you know, we don't see what they see, and there's something that may, might be an obvious overlook on our part that they can point out to us. So just doing that type of thing, I think reaching out as a council and staff to these individuals and asking, "Hey, what can we do to help and facilitate that?"
And again, the new short-term RHEC, Regional Health Equity Coalition, we have $400,000 that's coming to our region this year, just to help support that work.
Wow.
So again, three new FTE that our region didn't have before. This is under United Way of Southwestern Oregon, and I think that there's partnership that we can, that we can do with that group.
Yep, that sounds good.
That's all I have.
Are you sure?
Anything else? Is it okay on the timeframe, we should be back at council workshop, it could be a month or so.
I think so. If I may, I know we talked about housing, and we've talked about incentivizing new housing, we've talked about using grants to maintain other housing that's at risk. The one thing I think staff is wanting to suggest, and one thing that we have difficulty with now, is creating, at least for your consideration, a rental housing code. For that rental housing that we have out there now, we have difficult time, because we don't have code or standards, so we can't really enforce it. And living conditions in some of those rental housings is, I'm not sure I would put my worst enemy in some of that housing. But something for your consideration, and that staff could work on, I think is appropriate. It's used in other communities, and it just helps those people that don't own their own homes someplace to go.
No, I agree. I think, in fact, we were approached by someone about the Chandler, and how that has not, there's some faulty issues there for living conditions, and you're right, if we don't have something in place, there's nothing we can do about it.
I think, yeah, definitely a tool.
Yeah.
Well, with the, well, it's probably a lengthier discussion for another time, what it would look like for owners that were non-compliant, and if that would start to factor into the other ordinances we passed around zombie properties and holding first position on liens.
Salem's having rental housing for years, it's probably a good working model.
Who does?
Cool.
Salem.
Okay.
Well, this, that can also lead into one of those other things that Counselor Miles was talking about, and that inspection program, you know, it gives them some means to look at where they wouldn't normally if they have a complaint.
I thought that was just for commercial.
Right, but because...
Sure.
Because of the issues of going in, but if, if there's a complaint, then we have a code.
Yeah.
Then it helps give a tool to...
Yeah, a lot of the complaints that code enforcement gets is, is really predominantly rental housing.
Any other bits of your...
I'd just like to make a comment, this is a pretty impressive report here, and like John said at the start, it's only 10% of us, it's 90% of the staff here, so I want to thank you guys for all the work you do.
Absolutely, yep. And what you've accomplished in the last two years, I mean, this is impressive. And it's nice to hear somebody from outside the area recognize it as much, so, yeah.
Very impressive. It's impressive that you all gave your Saturday to your community. Yeah, once again, thank you for that.
And thank you.
Yes.
You kept us on point, and we're done early.
Which is not easy to do.
Yeah, no kidding.